Go ahead and broadcast. Okay, it looks like we're broadcasting. Great. This is Hood River City Council meeting of January 11th, and we are officially opening the meeting at 6:01. Tonight, our first order of business is to administer the oath of office for our new counselors and who aren't new, they're renewed, and also the mayor, which will be renewed. And so Jonathan, if you could promote our municipal judge to administer those oaths for the people that were elected last November. Great, it looks like we have, I think it's Judge, is that correct? Judge Cleveland?
That's correct, I'm here.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you. So are you ready for the oath then?
We're ready.
All right, well, we'll start with you, Mayor. You want to say, "I state your name?"
I, Kate McBride.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And of the State of Oregon.
And of the State of Oregon.
The city charter of the city of Hood River.
The city charter of the city of Hood River.
And the ordinances and resolutions of said city.
And the ordinances and resolutions of said city.
And that I will, to the best of my ability.
And I will, to the best of my ability.
Faithfully perform the duties of mayor of the city of Hood River, Oregon.
Faithfully perform the duties of mayor of the city of Hood River, Oregon.
During my continuance therein, so help me God.
During the continuance herein, so help me God.
That's it?
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Well, whoever's next. I have Counselor Zen Miller on the list here.
All right.
Okay, start out, "I state your name, please."
I am Mark Zen Miller.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And of the State of Oregon.
And of the State of Oregon.
The city charter of the city of Hood River.
The city charter of the city of Hood River.
And the ordinances and resolutions of said city.
And the ordinances and resolutions of said city.
And that I will, to the best of my ability.
And I will, to the best of my ability.
Faithfully perform the duties of counselor of the city of Hood River, Oregon.
Faithfully perform the duties as counselor of the city of Hood River, Oregon.
During my continuance therein.
During my continuance therein.
All right, thank you. Okay, Councilmember Saunders.
Hi, Judge Cleveland.
Good evening, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Good, all right. "I state your name."
I, Megan Saunders.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And of the State of Oregon.
And of the State of Oregon.
The city charter of the city of Hood River.
The city charter of the city of Hood River.
And the ordinances and resolutions of said city.
And the ordinances and resolutions of said city.
And that I will, to the best of my ability.
And that I will, to the best of my ability.
Faithfully perform the duties of counselor of the city of Hood River, Oregon.
Faithfully perform the duties of counselor of the city of Hood River, Oregon.
During my continuance therein.
During my continuance therein.
All right, thank you. Okay, and last but not least, we have Counselor Rivera.
Here I am.
All right, good evening.
Good evening.
Okay, let's start with, "I state your name."
I, Gladys Rivera.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the State of Oregon.
Okay. The city charter of the city of Hood River.
The city charter of the city of Hood River.
And the ordinances and resolutions of said city.
And the ordinance and resolutions of said city.
And that I will, to the best of my ability.
And that I will, to the best of my ability.
Faithfully perform the duties of counselor of the city of Hood River, Oregon.
Faithfully perform the duties of counselor, I forgot.
Of the city of Hood River.
Of the city of Hood River, Oregon.
During my continuance therein, so help me God.
During my continuance therein, so help me God. And I like to read it in Spanish.
Please, I was just going to ask you to do so if you wish.
Yes, can you please raise your hand with me to make it official?
Absolutely.
Okay. Yo, Gladys Rivera, juro solemnemente que apoyaré la Constitución de los Estados Unidos de Oregon, los Estados Unidos. El estado y la ciudad de Hood River y las ordenanzas y reglaciones de dicha ciudad. Y lo haré lo mejor que pueda, cumpliré fielmente de los deberes de la consejera de la ciudad de Hood River, Oregon, durante mi permanencia en el mismo entonces, entonces, ay, Dios mío.
All right, thank you. Gracias.
Thank you so much, Judge Cleveland, for coming this evening and getting everyone's warning in. I really appreciate it.
Thank you, it was my pleasure. Have a good evening.
Thanks. Okay, next on the agenda. I'd like to acknowledge the land that we have here that is so precious to us that we all live on and the beauty of it and all of the Native Americans that took care of this for years and years and years before anyone else was here to take care of it. And I just want to acknowledge how precious it is and how they have revered it so much and took such great care of it. Thank you, thank you, we really appreciate it. All right, Pledge of Allegiance, Jonathan?
Just one moment, Mayor, I'm getting the video up.
That's fine. All right. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Oh, well, there you go, an all-American dog right there at the end. Thank you. All right. So first order of business, we are going to recess to consider urban renewal agenda, the Urban Renewal Agency Agenda this evening. So we're going to go ahead and recess now at, oh, we got 6:10, and we're going to open the Urban Renewal Agency Meeting and call it to order. Do we have any agenda additions or corrections?
We do not.
Okay, our minutes from December 14th are, we're included in our packet. Could I have a motion to approve those, or do we have any questions about those?
I, sorry.
I don't see any questions.
I move we approve the minutes from December 14th, 2020.
Okay, Megan has made a motion to approve the minutes, and Tim has seconded that motion. Any discussion? Roll call vote, Megan?
Yes.
Gladys?
I.
Mark?
Yes.
Jessica?
Hi.
Tim?
Hi.
David?
Hi.
And I don't see anyone else on. Do we know if Eric is actually on? Or not? He would be joining us by phone this evening if he's able to connect.
Mayor, I don't believe so, he has not gotten in touch with me.
Okay, well, I'll just keep checking every so often to see if we have a vote, and if he has been able to join us, I'll just keep checking in during the meeting this evening. And Chair votes "I" on those minutes. All right. We have this, we have some.
Sorry, Kate, Eric's number is the top purple one in the attendees. The 2017 member?
Jonathan, do you want to promote that person?
Can we just hit "allow to talk" or not? Or you can push star six?
Yeah, I'm terribly sorry. Is it the telephone number? I'm sorry, could you say the name again of who I'm allowing to speak?
Eric Haney. Counselor Haney.
Okay, and he is on the telephone. 2017 number? Okay, great, thank you.
Eric, can you hear us? You're unmuted, Eric, if you can talk.
Jonathan, is it possible to promote him out of attendees into panelists?
Unfortunately, no, I don't have that opportunity through the telephone. I did check.
It looks like he's unmuted, but.
I still see, I still see a line through his phone. Maybe he needs to press star six.
Mayor, Counselors, I'm happy to try to get in touch with him on this number so that you can, so that you can move forward with him.
Okay, yeah, if you can continue to do that, to see if we can get him on, that'd be great. So we do have a quorum that has voted to accept the minutes at this point, so we'll move forward. We have business from, we don't have any business from the audience that has signed up for urban renewal. We have some business from the audience for our regular meeting. So we'll write, we'll go right into the regular business item for urban renewal. And if you want to walk us through that, Will?
Thank you, Mayor. So we have two vacancies. Each one of them a three-year term in the Urban Renewal Advisory Committee. This committee meets monthly to review financial items, make recommendations to the Urban Renewal Agency Board. There were three applicants for the two positions. Two of them were incumbents. That's Jack Trumbull, who's current, who is acting as Chair for several years, and Amanda Goke. Also Tina McNurthy is the third applicant. And you see their applications and answers to our standard questions in your packet. Typically, we would interview one at a time, you know, separately, outside of a Zoom environment, but I think we can either interview the three at a time, asking them to take turns answering each question, or go through each question with them one at a time. And then I think for voting in this virtual environment, we could either just have a motion for the two, and then a second and majority vote for the two. Or we could go through a voting exercise using the chat box, however the board prefers.
Um, I'm not, you know, I think the interview process might work smoother if, maybe if we promoted all three at the same time, so they're all available. And then we could, it seems like it'd be more fair to ask, you know, one question, and then the other three the same question, and then the next question around, go to the second person and have them be first. Seems like that would be more fair, since everybody's going to hear everybody's answers anyway.
Sure.
So if we could promote everyone at once, and then we can decide on the voting when we get, when we get done with the questions.
Sure. Jonathan, can you please promote Jack Trumbull and Amanda Goke? And I don't see Tina on the call. So we may just have to rely on her written answers. Jack and Amanda, can you hear us?
Yep.
I can, yes.
Okay, great. If you can, if we can see you, that'd be great. So it's, looks like we just do, at this point, still have Amanda and Jack. I just want to double check that I don't want to leave out anyone if there need to be in the interview.
I don't see Tina McNurthy.
Don't see them, okay, all right, I'm looking on my screen too, I don't see anything for anyone else. Okay, so we'll go ahead with, with the questions. So let's go with Jack first, for the first question. What experience do you have working with a group or on a board that may consist of a diverse membership to solve problems?
How much time do we have?
A couple minutes?
You know, I'm pretty civic-minded. I've volunteered in a lot of capacities in Hood River and the county, been active in my State Funeral Directors Association. I think on a, probably a little bit more of an emotional side. I've helped with H-Rats in the past, which is our local mountain bike trail stewards. I've been a part of U-Rac for 10, 10 years, since the, since we adopted, well, prior to adopting a plan for the heights. And I think my involvement with local civic groups, the hospital and U-Rac and the city. I think I'm pretty well-equipped with these, these, you know, trying to find a collective solution to our community's wants and needs.
Thank you, Jack. Amanda, same question, what experience do you have working with a group? Or, oh man, this is hard to read here. Or on a board that may consist of a diverse membership to solve problems?
Sure. Yeah, like Jack, I've been on the U-Rac Committee for two years, not 10 like him, but a couple of years. And there's definitely a lot of differing opinions about the best way to proceed with things that come to that board. So I think that's given me probably the most experience solving problems with, you know, larger groups. This group being like the whole community of Hood River County, basically. And then I've also been on the library board for over 10 years, about 10 years, 10 or 11 years. The Library Foundation Board, so I've worked with them for a long time. And there's not so many, like, problems, but we do work together to find solutions to needs for the library and fundraising and things like that, so.
Great. Second question, I'll go first to you, Amanda. In your opinion, conflicts with the directions or decisions? Sorry, you guys, I'm reading this off of my phone.
Kate, would it be easier if one of us read it?
Uh, maybe. In your opinion, conflicts with the directions or decisions made by the agency, how would you handle that situation? If there are directions or decisions made by the agency board now, and they conflict with your opinion?
Gotcha. You know, I guess I would just, I'm pretty sure I would voice my opinion previous to the decision. I'm not really one, if I have an opinion, I like to voice it and make sure that it's taken into consideration and that it's heard. And so, leading up to the decision of the board, I would have been, you know, vocal about it. And if the board decided to go the, a different way than what I thought should happen, I guess I would, you know, maybe not be happy about it, but I would support their decision, knowing that I had done what I could to, you know, make it go, make it, but whatever. Convince them to, you know, that the way I thought it should go was that the right way. And just knowing that I had done what I could would just make me accept the decision and try to move on and find ways to support it by listening to others who had supported it in the first place, so. I hope that makes sense.
Yeah. Jack, same question for you. In your opinion, if your opinion conflicts with the directions or decisions made by the agency board, how would you handle that situation?
I, I love having my mind changed. I love having an idea that I think is the best idea, but then sitting down with a collective group of others and having what I thought was the best idea, maybe not be the best idea. So I think my ego resilience allows me to be flexible in that capacity. I think one thing that I've learned, just to bring it back to U-Rac a little bit, with, with a lot of the voices that come in here, you know, we have, we have, you know, we have the commercial side of wanting to keep the roads big and safe and get trucks up in there. We've got the, you know, the local side that wants to close roads and make it bicycle and pedestrian safe. And I think, I think within the scope of any political arena, compromise is the greatest gift that we could do. And, and I enjoy compromise. And I always, I always define compromise as the two parties walking away, neither side excited about the outcome, but both seeing the benefits that the other have brought to the table. So, so I look, I look at opportunities of compromise when there's different voices. Maybe it's different voices that the city has, or that the agency has brought to us that, you know, at face glance, I might not agree with. But at the end of our meetings and our dialogue, I should be at least able to buy into it. Because I think, I think what we do is, you know, we're trying to be mindful of not only what's best for the city, but what's best for our constituents, our, our members of the city. So I'm not sure if I'm talking in circles, or if I'm answering your question. I, I don't like conflict, I like compromise. And I like finding those common grounds that both parties walk away feeling okay.
Thanks, Jack, I think you explained well what, what your feelings were. Jack, I have you start with this one. This committee will be doing the majority of the planning and prioritizing for the agency and making recommendations to the agency board. Some meetings could be long and work outside of the meeting may be necessary. Can you give the time commitment necessary to work on this committee?
I can, and I think, you know, my past behavior is indicative of my future action, and I, I have committed the time. One thing that we have tried to do, and Will has been a great asset for me, is we've, we've tried to make sure our meetings don't go any longer than two hours. And if they are, we're going to table things. We might have a special meeting between our monthly meeting, because we want our meetings to be effective. And, and sometimes a longer meeting isn't more effective. So, but we'll, I'll put in as much time as we need to. And side note, I jumped into the Urban Renewal Plan and the Advisory Council with the, with the idea that I was going to be helping with the Heights Plan. Not that I was duped, but I really got to cut my teeth and learn about urban renewal, helping with not only the State Street project, but also the waterfront project. So now we're really getting into, you know, my vested interests and Amanda's vested interests up here in the Heights. And I think, you know, the tenure I've had has really given me an understanding of how urban renewal works and my role as a part of the Advisory Council with the agency.
Thanks, Jack. Amanda, same question for you. I think you, you heard the question. Can you give the commitment, time commitment necessary was, you know, the question? And you've been on the committee, so you know what the work is.
Yeah, um, yes, I definitely think, you know, I, I don't know that I've missed any meetings so far. And I actually feel like meetings get canceled so often that I want to spend more time on urban renewal, but I'm not even able to, because we don't have the meetings when we're scheduled to. So I've been on the committee for two years, and I feel like maybe half of them even, I don't know. Like, a lot of them have been canceled. So I'm like, I want to give more time, I wanted to go to special meetings, I want to do more than actually what I have done in the past two years, so. Hopefully, we can keep moving.
Okay, thanks, Amanda. Next question for you, Amanda. What do you think would be the most challenging about serving on this committee and why?
I think the most challenging thing that I have experienced serving on U-Rac has been the really passionate feelings that are on opposite spectrums of people in the community that come to the meetings and the workshops and things that, you know, kind of like what Jack was talking about. We have commercial people, we have, like, business owners, we have residents. And their visions and their priorities are often off, like, just totally different, opposite ends of the spectrum. So, and even sometimes the residents just feel totally different about things. It's not always business people versus residents. But among all the people in the county, there are very strong feelings about the heights, because I think it is more of a local neighborhood. People use it on a daily basis, maybe more, I don't know. I don't, wasn't here for the downtown, so I don't know how that went and all the stuff that was involved with that, maybe it's similar. But it's definitely the hardest part for me is hearing the extreme and the, and being so adamant about what they want, and then trying, you know, to take that and bring it to the committee and find a happy medium and a compromise like Jack was talking about, so.
Thanks, Amanda. And same question for you, Jack. What would, what do you think would be the most challenging about serving on the committee and why?
Well, I think there's a, there's a distinct difference between listening to all the vested interests in the, in the Heights and in the city, you know, the different parties that are involved, and hearing. And I think that's probably the most difficult thing, is when you, when you regurgitate what we've heard and the act of listening, and hopefully find a solution that, that everybody feels like in the community, that they're a part of making. And, and knowing that some of the decisions that we suggest to Advisory Council might not be 100% aligned with what special interest groups might vision for the heights. And it's, that's, that's probably the most difficult and challenging and actually fun part of what we do, is just trying to collect all this minutia and all these, these feelings and all this data, and, and then present something to the Advisory Council that is really going to be for the best interest of the city of Hood River, not just one entity over another. And then, at the end of the day, for each one of these entities to feel like, not only did we listen to them, not only did we entertain them with public meetings, we heard what they wanted, and we acted upon that.
Right, thanks, Jack. One last question, for Jack first. Do you anticipate any conflicts of interest to arise between your occupation and your role as an advisory committee member? and your role as an advisory committee member? And if so, how would you handle that?
Well firstly, I hope not. No, I don't think there'll be any conflicts of interest with with my occupation and, and being a part of the advisory council. Nor do I think there's.
Jack, you might just state your occupation for people listening on the phone, they might not know.
I own the funeral home.
Okay, just people on the phone don't, you know, they can't, if they don't know you, it's just better to state what it is. Thanks.
Okay, thanks, Kate. Yes.
Yeah.
They probably knew why I was giggling too. So yes, I, I hope that the funeral home has no involvement with urban renewal plans. And I also, I don't think my having property in the defined area in the Heights will have any, you know, I'm gonna, I'm gonna listen to all the voices. I'm just, I'm just one other voice. So I don't foresee any conflicts from me either professionally as a business or I guess civically as a property owner in the defined area.
Amanda? Do you see any?
Yes. No, I don't see any. I do own property and a business in the the corridor, the defined boundary, but I don't think that I would push anything that I want more than everybody. You know, I feel like I am able to separate, I guess, like my business and me as like a citizen and listening to all the other people and voices of the community. So no, I don't think I would have any conflicts of interest.
Okay. Great. That's all we, that's all the questions we have. Thank you both for coming this evening and, and for all the service that you've given us so far. Really, really appreciate it. Do you have anything to add? Just, I'll give you one, one more minute each. So Jack, you want to go first? Just one minute? If you have anything to add?
I don't. I just want to thank you, Kate, and other city council for everything that you guys do. I know that we interact on the fringes, you know, we kind of work with the agency, which all of you are, are a part of. I, I, it, it's minus this pandemic, it, it has felt really, really good the last couple of years with so much forward momentum. And I feel like everything that Will has done kind of behind the scenes that, that the advisory council as well as the agency are aware of. I think it's, it's exciting to be going in the right direction. That's all I have.
Right. Anything for you, Amanda?
Just that I, yeah, I took over for somebody. It's basically in my application, but I'll just restate it, like I haven't even served a full term. So I would really love the opportunity to keep serving. And we've, you know, started this project with the Heights and got affirmed. And I would really love to be a part of seeing it through to, you know, actually making some physical changes in the Heights. So I hope I get the opportunity and thank you all for being here and listening.
Thank you so much. Appreciate your time, both of you. Will, did you want to kind of explain now how we, a couple of different ways we could go forward?
Sure. And you know, one of the ways included the, using the chat box. And I'm not actually seeing a chat box. I wonder if that's not in the conference mode. Jonathan, can you opine? Is there a way to do, use the chat box if we, if we want to?
Will, no, it is not. We have the chat disabled.
Okay.
Webinars and public meetings.
Okay. So, so I was thinking, if we wanted to vote, we could use the chat box. I guess we could vote verbally, everyone just stating their first and second choices and I could collect tallies. Or if you think that there's consensus, someone could just make a motion for the two individuals to, of the three candidates for the two openings. And a motion, a second and a vote would do it.
Okay, so I'm just going to ask counselors. If you want to, there's two different ways that Will has stated that we do this. A is someone can just make a motion for two people and we can see if we can pass it. And B would be to go around and say, I vote for counselor or I vote for person A and person B. And that, that would be choice B. So let's just go around and let's see what, what people want to do. Mark?
I'm able to make a motion anytime you're ready.
Okay, so you just say, make a motion. Okay. Gladys?
Make a motion.
Okay. Tim?
Motion.
Motion. Dave?
Motion, please.
Okay, Megan?
Motion.
And Jessica?
Make a motion.
All right. Let's see if we can hear Eric. Don't know if we can hear Eric, but star six, if you want to speak. Make a motion. Okay, thank you, Eric. We, we got it. Thank you. And chair says, make a motion. So that's the way we'll go. And does anyone, would, would anyone like to make a motion? Raise your hand. Mark's going to make a motion.
Hey, I, I really appreciate the work that Jack and Amanda have been doing on the UREC committee. I, I appreciate that they've been in, been in the mix of it with the Heights Plan and that they're both business owners in the Heights. So I make a motion to, to choose Amanda and Jack as the UREC selections for this election or whatever.
Appointment. Yep. Okay, Mark has made a motion to appoint Amanda and Jack for Urban Renewal Advisory Council. Do I have a second?
I second that.
Gladys has made a second to that motion. All right, let's just go around and vote then. Jessica?
I.
Gladys?
I.
Mark?
Yes.
Tim? Dave?
Aye.
Megan?
Yes.
Eric?
Aye.
And chair votes aye. Amanda and Jack, you are appointed as, to continue on in the Urban Renewal Advisory Committee. Great work, you guys. And thank you for coming to do the interview this evening. Appreciate it. We'll have a lot, I think we're going to have more work next year than we had last year for you.
Yes. Thank you. Thank you for your confidence and I'm glad to have Amanda back with us too. So, thank you all.
Great, thanks. All right. Anything else, Will?
No, that's it for tonight.
That's it for tonight. Okay. Anything else from Urban Renewal Agency members that you wanted to bring up regarding urban renewal? No? Okay, great. So Jack and Amanda and Dave, you're all released. We are, we are adjourning the Urban Renewal Agency meeting at 6:40. All right, we're going to go back into session for Hood River City Council meeting at this point. And we have Business from the Audience. We have three people that have signed up for Business from the Audience. Two people would like to speak on the police facility and one person wants to talk on missing middle housing. So let's go ahead and have Jonathan go ahead and promote Mary Ruth Petzing, Mari Ruth Petzing first.
Hello.
Hi, Mari Ruth.
Excellent, you can hear me.
We can hear you, yeah. You have three minutes.
Okay, thank you. Good evening. My name is Mari Ruth Petzing. I live at 1806 Avalon Drive in the city of Hood River. And tonight I ask you to not approve issuing the draft RFP for a new police building. The draft RFP acknowledges that there is a wide range of opinions on the location, necessary functionality, and even the near term need for a police station within the community and among elected leadership. But instead of taking time to engage with that seriously, the city seems poised to move forward with an RFP that requests a decision-making process led by an architectural firm, but then expresses the foregone conclusion of a quote "successful bond campaign." Ask for input now. Have a decision-making process that involves the community now, when the important decisions are to be made. I'm not interested in an online survey in English about what color to paint the entrance. In fact, when the community was asked for their input into priorities, housing and transportation and green space were overwhelmingly identified. I expect there are many new priority needs due to COVID. This plan, from its conception until today, has been based solely on input from the police and those who build traditional policing centers. No one asked for input from members of policed communities. No one asked for input from those who call the police, from disabled people, those experiencing houselessness, or people who have been the victims of domestic violence, or immigrants, or people who are directly impacted by our systems of injustice. Talk to someone living in their car with no bathroom. Maybe instead of showers only for police, we could build public showers that everyone could use. No one asked if perhaps a soft interview room is less of a priority than rental assistance or childcare to someone who has suffered domestic violence. This community and this country are asking for a re-envisioning of policing. The city council responded to that by adopting the Resolution for Racial and Social Equity, which stated that the city will quote "explore community-based models of safety, support and prevention that could modify, supplement and/or support existing public safety practices", and said that the city will quote "actively seek input from all community members, especially for individuals from communities disproportionately affected by racism and other economic and social disparities." These seem like empty words compared to this process of the RFP. Where are they reflected in the draft RFP that is before you today? What modifications to existing public safety practices were considered in the space needs analysis? Which members of communities disproportionately affected by systemic injustices were listened to? I ask that you do not put out this RFP and instead turn your energies into making the resolution for racial and social equity a reality. One final thought. It's important not to mistake a focus group with professionals with getting input from marginalized communities. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mari Ruth. Peter Fink is next.
Yeah, hello, thank you. I'm just going to speak as well along the same lines of what Mary Ruth was, was just speaking about. When I, when I found out that the city of Hood River was considering building a new police building and parking structure at the Columbia Street location and just in general, I was sort of flabbergasted and shocked. And, you know, somehow unsurprised as well, just because 2020 was, was, you know, a, a year of economic downturn and national conversations about rethinking the role and lack of accountability of the police amid racial injustice. And yet, the fact that the city was considering a multimillion dollar project just to spruce up the police department's offices, you know, that, that was, it, it seemed like a little bit of a slap in the face, which from 2020 wasn't much of a surprise. That was, it was a year of lots of slaps in the faces. But, you know, we're now in, we're now in 2021. It's a new year and it's time to start waking up and start making the, the right decisions on policy and budgeting. And echoing what, you know, what has been just said by the community just before me. I think just the, even the, the considering of or an RFP, just, just any sort of consideration of a police building is sort of ridiculous. We know that the police aren't serving our communities. That's the, the, the police like to claim that they keep our communities safe. Well, we know that they don't keep our communities safe when we have people unhoused, people suffering health conditions that aren't being addressed because they don't have access to public transit that can get them to their health appointment. Or they don't have, you know, they, they don't have the ability to, you know, stay safe because the mental health services aren't available to them. These are areas that the city could be focusing funding, you know, focusing on directing more funding towards, putting in bus stops or whatever forms of supporting CATs goals or, or whatnot. Or, you know, investing in the mental health system strengthening directly. And instead, what we've seen is that the city continues to invest large amounts in the police already. Huge amounts. Just, there was, I think, almost 100,000 just for two police cars alone, which is sort of hard to believe when you see that we don't actually have any shelters for, for houseless folks facing houselessness.
Peter, I, Peter, I need you to wrap up because you're at three minutes now.
Okay, well, so I'm just asking that, that you, that instead of considering this building, please consider the other aspects of the community, keeping the community safe. Thank you.
Thank you. And last to speak for Business from the Audience is Heather Staten, who wants to talk about missing middle housing.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Perfect. Mayor McBride and counselors, my name is Heather Staten. I'm the Executive Director of Thrive Hood River, PO Box 1544 Hood River. Hood River needs more housing. Our ever-increasing home prices are a function of supply and demand. We've got way too many people chasing far too little supply. The 2015 Housing Needs Analysis anticipated production of 100 dwelling units a year in order to meet population growth. But actual production has been about half of that, just 50 units a year. Is it any wonder that housing costs have continued to go up? To make matters worse, market forces have made it economically attractive to construct large, expensive new homes, even as household size is falling. Hood River embarked on the Missing Middle Code as a way to provide greater diversity of housing types to meet the needs of your changing population while still building homes that are compatible and look and feel to existing neighborhoods. The extent, the essential truth is that the city of Hood River does not build homes. Developers build homes. So if you want more diverse and plentiful housing, not only do you need code that gives developers the right to build the kinds of units you want, but also incentives for them to actually build them. One of the questions before you tonight addresses this. Why would a developer choose to build one of these smaller missing middle types rather than the conventional large and boxy townhouses we see all over Hood River? Your packet suggests two alternatives. Either reduce the allowed size of townhouses or increase the size allowed for the missing middle products. There are problems with both of these approaches. Reducing the maximum size of townhouses could reduce the financial incentives to build townhouses at all and leave us with even less housing production, where the builder just decides the return is better building a single-family home instead of two smaller townhouses. Increasing the size of the new missing middle types could land you in the situation the new code is trying to avoid. New construction that's out of scale with the neighborhood. If you want builders to create smaller homes, the right incentive is letting them build a greater number of units than the current code allows on a given piece of property. The city of Portland's residential infill project created a sliding scale for square footage of development on a normal city lot. So a detached, single-family home could be up to 2,500 square feet. A duplex could be 3,000. A three or fourplex could be up to 3,500. And then they took an extra step, which is to get even more square footage and a greater number of units, up to 6,000 square feet or six units, if half the units met an affordability requirement. Portland was also able to estimate the number of dwelling units that the new code was likely to produce compared to its existing code. If your consultants are able to provide that kind of information, it would allow you to quantify the benefits of the draft code when making your decisions. We highly recommend that you bring some local developers into the process. Ask them to review the proposed building types and if they're likely to build them. You want this code to result in real homes that people live in, not just drawings on paper. The draft prototypes are a great start. We particularly commend the prototype designs for the attention they pay to the public realm. The new buildings feel, how the new buildings feel from the street and how they fit into their neighborhoods. As far as the parking question, many, many cities have removed parking requirements and let that decision be made by developers in the market. For most of the older part of Hood River, if you think about the area east of May Street School, it was built before onsite parking requirements. Driveways, parking spaces and turnarounds take up a lot of real estate, reducing the amount available for development. Two parking spaces take up about 650 square feet, which is the same as a two-bedroom apartment. Finally, we recommend approval of the ordinance on frontage improvements and street extractions. The previous code The previous code stopped some low-impact but highly beneficial projects like some ADUs. And finally, I wanted to say-
Heather, I need you to wrap up.
I just want, I just want to tell you that I'm really encouraged to see you kicking off 2021 with this level of attention to the levers that the city has to impact housing, and I hope this is the year we, we finally get some stuff done. So thanks so much.
Thank you, Heather. All right, that was business from the audience. So we have two public hearings this evening. And the first one is on Ordinance 2060, which is regarding personal services contracts. And since they're a public hearing, I have a script for that, and our city attorney is going to be going over the first one. Ordinance 2060 is an ordinance amending Title II Administration and Personnel, Chapter 32.02 Public Contracting, Section 2.32.060 Personal Services Contracts of the Hood River Municipal Code to make the city's procurement procedures for personal services contracts consistent with current state law. The, this is a proposed amendment to the Hood River Municipal Code that is not part of the city's land use regulations. The purpose of the hearing is to accept any and all public testimony or comment on this proposal for, against, and neutral. The order of the events for tonight is we will have staff report. Then we'll have written communications, which would be any written communications the council could have received regarding this. And then to announce those, then there'll be oral testimony. If, if anyone has testimony on it for or against, and then we will deliberate. So we'll have our staff report first on Ordinance 2060. Dan?
Thank you, Mayor. This code amendment is designed to bring the city's code with regard to the bidding requirements for personal services agreements, bring it up to what the current state law provides. We're not inconsistent with state law because we're, we're more restrictive and we don't take advantage of some of the, what state law allows, and, and this would expand what we're allowed to do. And I think the biggest difference is that for many years, state law did not allow us to take into consideration the cost, the price, when comparing different proposers for professional services agreements. And it started with city engineering contracts that, and architect and surveying contracts, we're required to base our selection on qualifications and can't really take into account cost considerations. And from my perspective as a city attorney, it made it very difficult for a lot of local governments who are entirely constrained by their budgets. And, and I think the change to state law several years ago reflects that. So you can take into consideration cost to the extent that it can be 15% of the total evaluation factors that you, that you have. Also, state law currently, if you will, if you look at the proposal that's before you tonight, the code amendment, it starts out by categorizations of kind of process for small pro, uh, small total contract costs. There's very little, then there's intermediate, and then there, there are larger scale contracts. So 10,000, this is the first limit, then 10 to 50,000, and then contracts over 50,000. State law has much higher dollar limits, and discussing this with the city manager, she didn't feel that it was prudent to take full advantage of what state law allows, which would give pretty much unbridled discretion to staff for extremely large contracts. Neither she nor I feel very comfortable taking on that authority. We must prefer to have city council involved in selection of these things. So that's one aspect of this proposal that's not taking full advantage of what state law allows. But you'll see that there are a kind of a large number of factors that can be taken into account when considering personal services contracts. That comes out of state law. And all the other provisions that are in here are also out of state law. Looking to see if there's anything unique to Hood River. There really isn't. Your prior code was super short, simple, and did not have very much elaboration on these evaluation factors. So this was designed to conform as, as well as I could to what state law currently allows, except it doesn't have the kind of full-on dollar limits, doesn't go as high as state law allows the staff discretion. So without, I'll take any questions if you have any.
Okay, does anyone have questions? For city attorney, Almar? And then we'll do Tim.
Thanks, Dan. Um, the packet doesn't include the old language. What, can you just tell us what the numbers were that-
Yeah.
We're changing them?
I don't think we're changing them at all.
We are not changing the numbers.
Yeah. So, um, yeah, the, the current code section 060, the bulk of it is these, actually just two categories, 10 to 50,000, and then contracts over 50,000. And then it has some really short, simple criteria that you would take into consideration. And then it also has the exemption for if you can, you can, by resolution, if you want to exempt a particular contract, you can take that specifically and adopt specific findings. State law reflects this, your current code reflects this, and what's before you keeps this, that you can exempt contracts if it's, number one, unlikely to encourage favoritism or diminish competition will result in cost savings to the city or otherwise promotes the best interest of the city or the public. So there's a lot more, a lot more provisions in this, just because state laws become more elaborate over time.
Tim, did you have a question?
Well, Mark, thanks, thanks, Mayor. Mark covered part of it. So the, so what I think I'm hearing you say, Dan, is that these changes will allow more flexibility or more to accept different types of contractors? Is that correct?
I think so. I guess that's maybe a way to characterize it. State law has, over the years, has become more, provide more evaluation factors. Now you can take price into account and those sorts of things, whereas, and so it, it does kind of expand to take advantage of those flexibility elements.
And councillor, if I would, could, that, and that's the reason for this, is that it's an efficiency in process for city camp, for the staff to be able to take price into consideration. That's, that was our primary purpose. And then also, now that it's provided by state law, allows, you know, a more prudent use of, of taxpayer funds because we, we can, or utility rates is where it's most appropriate, because we can compare apples to apples in price, whereas we could only look at qualifications before. So those are, that's the main reason why we're bringing this to you today.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Dan from other councillors? I just want to check in with Eric. If you had any questions, I can see you're on the phone still, I believe. I don't see anything or hear anything from Eric, so I don't think he has a question. Okay. We'll assume so, with no response. Okay, so has anyone received any written correspondence regarding the item, this particular item on our agenda? No, okay. Every, Tim or Gladys, have you received any written correspondence about this? No, okay, so, and I haven't either. So just for the record, everyone, all the councillors that I can see, which is all except Eric, have not received any written correspondence. And I'll just ask again on Eric, have you received any written correspondence? And we can't hear Eric, so just for the record. So now we would take public testimony. So anyone that is on the call that would like to testify on this ordinance, if you could raise your hand so that Jonathan can promote you to a speaker regarding this subject.
Mayor, I do not see any hands raised tonight.
Okay, and I don't see any either. All right, so we don't have any testimony, and that was for testimony on either side, for, against, or neutral. So we do not have any oral testimony. So now we will go ahead and close the hearing, because this is a public hearing, and we will go into deliberations. If anyone would like to deliberate on it or has a comment about it, we'll do that first, and then we'll see if we can have a motion on it. Any other comments? I don't see anyone that has any additional comments on it. I don't, I don't have any comments, other than I think it's a good thing. It's going to save us time and money in the long run to be able to, to change this, as the state has allowed us to do. Does someone, would someone like to make a motion?
I could do that.
Okay, Megan?
I move to place ordinance number 2060 on the city recorder's report of tonight's main agenda for approval and first reading by title only.
Okay, we have a motion by Megan to place ordinance 2060 on the city recorder's report on tonight's main adjustment, agenda for approval and a first reading by title only. Do I have a second? Jessica's made a second additional discussion. All right, all those in favor? Jessica?
Aye.
Megan?
Yes.
Gladys?
Aye.
Mark?
Yes.
Tim? I'll see if I can check in with councillor Haney. Eric? If you could hit star six. Nope, okay, we can't get him. Chair votes aye. So motion passes for that. So we have a second public hearing. And I'll go ahead and read the similar script for that, and Mark Janik is going to give us a report on that when I get through our opening of this public hearing. So this is for ordinance 2059, an ordinance amending Title 15 Buildings in Construction, Chapter 15.16 Building Permits of the Hood River Municipal Code to bring the city's authority to exact street frontage improvements as a condition of building permit issuance into compliance with current takings law. The purpose of this amendment to the Hood River Municipal Code that is not part of the city's land use regulations. The purpose of the hearing is to accept any and all public testimony or comment on this proposal for or against. Order of events will be staff report, written communications, oral testimony, and then after that deliberations. So staff report will be first. Mark, Janik?
Good evening, Mayor and city council, councilors. Tonight, the second code alteration proposal is relative to friends improvements that are required by city code when building permits are requested. As part of the permit enhancement project, one of our objectives, one of staff's objectives was to look at the code and see if there was any alterations that could be done that would make, make the, the process more efficient and more fair. The intent of tonight's code alterations in Chapter 15 is similar to the previous proposal tonight. It's to update our regulations to match current Oregon land use law. Our existing code language concerns street friends improvements that are required as part of building permits. And those friends improvements can include roadway, curb, gutter, and other improvements within the right-of-way. But what the current, these have been in the code for a long time, but what the current state code allows are improvements that are relative, that are proportionate to the impact that a building permit might have. Currently, your code, our code doesn't, it sometimes can be, the requirements for the friends improvements can be greater than the impact of the building permits themselves. And in order to rectify these issues, we've changed, or we're proposing that the code language reflects what the state of Oregon courts have determined is rational for property improvement. That's the summary, and I'm here for any questions.
Okay, great. Questions, questions for Mark? Mark Zandmiller?
Thanks. Um, two questions. Does, I, I can't tell, because the deleted text or the old text isn't in the packet, so I can't tell. Is it getting harder for applicants or easier for applicants? I can't tell that.
It's going to be, it's going to be easier, because with the current code, when you apply for building permit, it could be a small permit, or it could be expensive permit, it could be an addition, or it could be remodeling within your existing walls. We're required to look at and to require and look at improvements to the city's street. It could be a half-street improvement, or it could be all the curb. And when someone's doing a house improvement, typically, it's not proportionate to what those improvements are required as part of a code. So it'll be easier and less expensive for the applicants.
Like if I do a bathroom, I don't need to fix a curb?
That's correct.
That's the gist, yeah. And then my other question is just, in 15, 16 to 20A, it talks about sidewalk grades. Is that just the slope of the hill?
It can be a slope of the hill, or it could be the side slope of the sidewalk itself. When ADA is taken into consideration with sidewalks, it's both the cross, cross-slope as well as the slope of the hill.
Gotcha. Okay, those are the only questions that I have.
And other people have questions for Mark?
Could, Mayor, could I maybe add a few comments? Because this is sort of a strange duck in my experience. This normally, and I think you, all of you are familiar with kind of the notion that developers pay the cost of the improvements needed to serve their development, that usually means the onsite and adjacent rights-of-way get improved. And you still have that authority under state law when you grant land use approval. This code provision just deals with building permits, and it's very unusual in my experience to see that kind of exaction authority associated with just a building permit. And so, you know, this code provision acknowledges that this, this authority just applies to building permits that don't have an underlying or preliminary land use approval associated with it. And that's normally where you would exact these street frontage improvements. So it was a very weird thing to see this associated with, with strictly building permits and this. So it does bring the city's code more into alignment with case law in Oregon and on a national level as well.
Jessica?
Um, thank you, Mark and Dan, for those comments. One question, so I, one, I, I think this is great. It seems a lot more fair. I remember hearing an example of an ADU that had stopped the process when they learned about all the front inch improvements that were going to be required in that instance, and it was going to be more than the cost of the ADU. But it sounds like that potentially would still be the case, because that might have, would be a land use issue and not just a building permit. Is that?
That does, that does make sense, maybe, maybe not. State law, the case law requires the city, even when you exact these things, these improvements as part of a land use approval, that they still, that there still is a nexus, a rational nexus between the project that is being approved and its impact, and also that the cost of these improvements be proportional to the impact. So we still have to go through that sort of analysis going forward. And so if it, if it is something that exceeds the cost or the value of the project, the city probably wouldn't be able to impose such an expensive exaction in that particular case. It requires a particularized set of findings by the city, the city has, has to undertake that.
For land use as well, as well, not just for building permits?
Right, it's usually in the land use context, as I said, it's very weird to see this just attached to building permits, an authority attached to building permits. So that's why the first thing is this code amendment, and I think there will be in the next year, a code amendment that kind of pins this down for land use permits generally. Just the rational nexus and the rough proportionality requirements.
Okay, that sounds like that would be great. Thank you.
So Dan, you're reference, that, just that last comment you just made about, are you talking about Hood River specifically? That we would be coming forward with something regarding that? Or do you mean?
Yes, that's my understanding.
Hood River specifically, okay.
And Rachel, yeah.
Okay, so because ADUs are a land use, you have to get a land use permit prior to getting a building permit, there's two, two steps with an ADU. That land use permit could, could, but we don't know yet, because we haven't gone through this other process, to figure out if it's going to be, you know, too much of an ask, or, you know, if it's a 400 square foot ADU versus an 800 square foot, one's going to be a lot more expensive, maybe you should have to do some, but not as much. So that will be worked out later in the year, is that what you're saying?
Right, the requirement applies now generally, because this comes from case law, but, you know, that example you cite with the ADU, you know, the full frontage improvements that would be required for like totally undeveloped frontage would be full curb gutter sidewalk, maybe half street pavement, and so it'd be, have to be a pretty palatial ADU to justify that kind of exaction.
Okay. Other questions? Okay, no more, no questions. Just double checking in if Eric has a question, and if he's able to connect with us, I think he's still listening anyway. I don't see anything from him at this point, so we'll go on with, has any counselor received any written comments or correspondence regarding this ordinance? Shaking heads? Okay. Jessica, Megan, Gladys, Mark, Tim, and myself included have not received any information or anything written regarding this ordinance at this time. Double checking with Eric, have you received anything written? No word from him, okay. Now, I'm going to ask the public if they want to, if they have any testimony on this, either for, against, or neutral. Jonathan, if you want to check with our listeners to see if they have any comments to make?
Mayor, I do not see any hands raised presently.
Okay. We'll go ahead and close the public hearing then, and we'll go ahead and deliberate and take a motion if we don't have any deliberations. Any deliberations?
To be doing.
All right, do we have anyone that wants to make a motion? The motion is on page 11 of our packet.
I move to place ordinance number 2059 on the city, the city recorder's report of tonight's main agenda for approval and first reading by title only.
I'll second.
Thank you, Gladys has made the motion, Megan has seconded the motion to put ordinance 2059 on the city recorder's report of tonight's main agenda for approval for first reading by title only. Any discussion? Okay, roll call vote, Jessica?
Aye.
Megan?
Yes.
Gladys?
Aye.
Mark?
Yes.
Tim? And Chair votes aye. Eric, if you can hear us, and you can push star six. Okay, nothing from Eric, all right. Those are the two public hearings for the evening. Thank you, everyone. We're going to open the work session right now, and it is 7:17. Any additions or corrections?
No, Mayor, there are none, and, and just so you know, Mayor, we are actively working with Counselor Haney to try to resolve his connection issues. I imagine that if he is able to connect, that he'll interrupt and say hello, but I just wanted you to know, we are actively working with him.
Okay, I see he has, you know, it looks like he's got two spots on our screen, so I keep thinking, maybe he's, he's on. Okay, so our consent agenda has several things, council meeting minutes, OLCC permit, annual taxi business permits, and waterfront storm line financing. Do I have a motion to accept the consent agenda and approve it, or do I have any questions or someone wants something removed?
Mayor, we're still on the work session, you haven't opened, we haven't adjourned the work session, oh, but yeah, we just skipped ahead, it was my mistake, no, it was my mistake, I interrupted your flow.
I, that's okay, that's okay. So we have no additions or corrections for the work session. So now we are going to go to the middle missing code amendment, which will be Dustin.
Thank you, Mayor, I'm going to try to do a screen share here and get you all onto, get our presentation going. Hopefully you see some colorful graphics.
Yes.
Excellent. Okay. Well, thank you, tonight, the purpose of this item is to provide an update on the middle housing code project and get some directions from council. On a couple of needed issues that we need, we need to have incorporated into some of the planning commission deliberations, as well as into the final recommendations on the code. As a recap, for those who may be joining us in this conversation, middle housing, AKA the missing middle, is a category of homes which are characterized, commonly characterized by duplexes, triplexes, townhouses, cottage clusters, and courtyard housing. Generally, these houses are considered smaller alternatives to our single family dwellings, but intended to be compatible in the size and scale with single family or traditional neighborhoods. This project in particular has its roots in the housing needs analysis from 2015, which is incorporated into our comp plan, as well as some TGM transportation growth management work that was done in 2018. It made its way onto the council work plan in 2020. Earlier this year, the project was launched with some advertisements and outreach that went through our project specific webpage, through some social media outreach, as well as some publications in the city's newsletter in both English and Spanish. We also had a couple meetings with planning commission to discuss the item, and this is, I've been to council a couple times to, to bring you up to speed. Earlier this year, and following up with some of that outreach, staff and the, its consulting team began to work through some of the housing prototypes, and some of the code work that we're going to really be used as guidance to make amendments to the city code and the zoning code in order to increase the opportunity for some smaller, more compact development. And then, on December 21st, planning commission begins technical review of the code and some of the mechanics into the, the code itself. These included issues such as setbacks, height requirements, landscaping, discussions on limitation of unit sizes in order to, or intended to promote some more affordable design, or importable products, the use of design elements, off-street parking requirements, as well as impact of fringe when it came to driveways and access points. And as you can see on your, your slide, we're, we're here in the feedback loop, so planning commission has started its, some of its work. But prior to coming back to council with our proposed and recommended framework, where you will have the opportunity to conduct your own public hearing, take your testimony and make, take the final action on the code, we are looking for some direction on two areas in particular, parking requirements that are included in the code, and another area that kind of generally becomes categorized as compatibility, scale, and marketability rolled into one, and, and we'll get into those here in a minute. But before we jump into parking, if you have any questions, I'd take them now.
Dustin, Dustin, this is Tim. So you're, you're saying that there's a couple of, couple of questions, one related to parking, and the other one was related to, what was that again?
To scale and marketability, size.
So are these different than the significant questions that are on page 18?
These are the significant questions. Oh, in your, in your packet, I'm sorry.
Right.
Related, you're discussing the seven that were included in the Sarah Architects memo?
Yep.
They overlap.
They overlap.
So some of those questions are, you know, are, I think have been addressed in the code and are, are really on the resolved issue. These are the two that I think are most outstanding, and that we need some council direction on in order to continue to evaluate this.
Thank you.
So, moving right, if that, that's all, we'll move right into the parking.
I think Gladys might have, did you have your hand up, Gladys? Oh, okay, all right, go ahead, Dustin.
Pretty customary with the, with the middle housing review, is, is a look at parking and parking requirements. Commonly, you know, looked at because middle housing is, is intended to be more affordable, a smaller product, and made, and developed consistently with a lot of infill housing types in areas that really, as you heard before, actually earlier tonight, were laid out and built without our current parking requirements. So what we've heard to date, and what we've heard is from, from planning commission as well as members of the public, is to, to be mindful of the, the amount of parking you do put in place. Make sure that we're not adding parking at the expense of some open space development, to be mindful and allow the market to do its work, but also to be very mindful of, of Hood River's circumstance and our, really our typical vehicle and lifestyle choices, and some limited transportation options. As well as the, the request to don't succumb to the, the same narrative, as we state, we want to develop something different and diversify our housing stock. Don't continue to do the same thing, don't continue to ask for the same requirements. So as, as staff and hearing some of those things, we're really been trying to blend the needs of Hood River and, and really keep true to the goals of providing some of these smaller housing types. So really, you, you end up with a parking scenario where, where the concern of adding parking will drive up our unit sizes and the cost of these dwellings. We'll take away from on-street parking, will occupy a greater amounts of area that, that could be used for, for dwelling units, or for dwelling and buildable area, as well as landscape area. To the contrary of that, with the understanding that parking reduction, when we don't see or any real behavioral changes for us who drive cars and, who drive to work, who rely on these vehicles, we should anticipate that additional on-street parking demands will, will be realized, that as more users rely on the on-street parking system, most likely requiring greater management or some street design considerations, allowing or providing for on-street parking, or reducing the amount of access so that we, we maximize our parking requirements. Currently, our code for our middle housing types, be it duplex, triplex, cottage, will require two spaces per dwelling unit. That's what the existing municipal code requires for, for each of them, regardless of the size, whether it's 800 square feet, whether it's 8,000, you're at two spaces per dwelling unit. And again, we've seen this increase dwelling size, we're, in our code, we've looked at the impacts of, of this on, really, the number of garages, the amount of curb space that we end up eroding, and the amount of front yards is illustrated here on the, in, in your, your city examples of what happens when you start loading, you know, a lot of cars off street. So the proposed draft in your packet really assumes a minimum of requirement of one off-street space per dwelling unit, which, which represents a reduction from the current standard, but is not so aggressive as, as it ignores the reality that we will either have people who rely on their vehicles, or we have people who will rely on their garages for storage. But ideally, it's paired with the, the standards to reduce the amount of curb cuts, to share access points, and to keep some on-street parking available. So before we continue to, to work on the code, this is really where we as staff, we need counsel, some council direction on here, generally is, we're looking to see if council is generally supportive with, of the reduction. And if not, we will need to take some action on, on our side to make code adjustments, and to do some revisions to, to our code work and the prototypes, and explore some other options. So with, with that, I can take a pause, and if there's any council feedback on that regarding this reduction and this proposed reduction for this housing type.
Dustin, I have one question. So you're talking about duplexes, triplexes, and cottages. You're not talking about apartments or multifamily units bigger than four, is that correct?
That's correct, that's where, the multifamily is where our code changes. And we require, other than downtown, which just had its recent amendment, it's 1.5 dwelling units for a multifamily development.
Okay, 1.5 spaces per?
Excuse me, yes, 1.5 spaces per unit.
Okay, all right.
What's the, when, when does it twitch from 1.5 to one?
Once you have four or more dwellings in a building.
On a lot?
Well, multifamily, it's multifamily.
Okay, 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 which is a different beast, right?
So? Yes, yes.
So would regular, you know, one house on an R2, or one house on an R1, still be at two then? And so this sort of would be an incentive to do? And so this sort of would be an incentive to do the smaller footprint?
Yeah, yes, that's, this is starting to become embedded in
Marketability.
Yeah, what, what hopefully becomes 1725, its own chapter related to middle housing.
Another question, since I can't see anyone and Kate couldn't see me waving around like a crazy person. The all of the form-based drawings have parking on the inside, which reduces curb cuts. Can, is there a quantitative improvement of on-street, you know, linear feat of on-street parking compared to, you know, a typical cut per, per home? So, so I guess I'm saying it's not really, it used to be two and now it's one. It used to be two, but we lose a bunch on the street for the curb cuts. And now it's one onsite and there's only one curb cut. So it's, it's equivalent to something in between probably.
Yeah. And I think that's where the, I think I mentioned the importance of sharing access points. The idea of hopefully, in the way they're designed is you're seeing one access for all the units. So if you end up with a cottage cluster of six units, they have one access point. So you're, you know, the, the idea, if you, this came up with our ADUs, if you required one space and they put it off the street and you take away one parking space, that's a net. We call that the net, net zero, net zero, if you consider you used to have a public parking space and now you have just one private parking space.
Well, can that be a thing that if you have one driveway for four spots, it's one? But if you have, if you insist on building something that has four driveways for four cottages, it's your back to two?
I think we've kind of dialed this into, you have one, you're gonna, we're only allowing one.
One curb cut?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. So that's, that's, you've good.
We've, we've kind of eliminated the discussion of, of curb cuts by really forcing consolidated access points. If you, some of the prototypes, and I think one of them that is still in there, but is dubbed discarded, shows the impact on lot coverage as well as impact of street parking when we started seeing more and more curb cuts occur. And I think this is, you know, the picture that I have up kind of provides that illustration as well, especially to the right where you see two cars parked on the street. This is a pretty good typical Hood River of, we have two garages, two cars parked on the street and a loss of all the parking on the street side versus a, a unit with no parking out front. And probably just as many parking spaces on the street.
So it makes it easier to get more units on that lot because you don't have as many vehicles required.
Yeah. And that's, that's some of the trade-offs. You know, it's a minimum mandatory, setting the, the minimum at one. It doesn't state that if somebody wanted to market their product else to something else, they wouldn't have the opportunity to do more. But, but it's, it's not setting the two dwelling unit ceiling or two dwelling unit per unit right now regardless of size.
Gladys, did you have your hand up? Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. So Dustin, I, I, for me, I'm okay to reduce parking spaces for sure. And is the, would this be the only incentive for a developer to want to build the, you know, cluster and all that, the small, the middle code housing as opposed to the townhouses? Is this the only incentive?
I know this is one of them. I think we're going to talk about one more coming up next, but I think the the idea that we're, we're trying to incentivize some of this by, by providing an opportunity to build more smaller units, more compact units rather than fewer larger ones. And, but that does go along with the parking aspect of making parking commensurate with that. And also, you know, if you're overparking it or requiring more parking, that, that is a disincentive. So.
More questions for Dustin? Megan? And then Tim?
Yeah, Dustin, would our townhouses part of the missing middle, would they go down to one space per unit?
So typically they're categorized in the canon of missing middle. We don't have them included within within this chapter. So a full-scale townhouse that is built basically under the current townhouse regulations, which I believe is 1719 of the code and follows that rules, wouldn't be reduced.
Okay. Um, cause yeah, I guess on my end, I, I see the, the value in reducing a disincentive or adding an incentive to do these smaller missing middle types, but I, especially given our second conversation, I would hate to add an incentive to do more of these townhomes if that's already where the incentive is. So it sounds like that's already not an issue. So thank you.
Yeah, the code intentionally kind of bifurcates the kind of smaller compact, although similar, could be attached to the large format, really the typical townhouse that we see now.
Tim, did you have a question?
Thanks, Mayor. One of the things that I was wondering is, you know, obviously the capacity for neighborhoods to absorb on-street parking is not going to be the same across neighborhoods. Or maybe it is, maybe there's maybe there's enough on-street parking right now for it to absorb everything. Do you have a feel for that? I mean, it seems like we're talking in really vague terms about trying to not make it so bad, but not really having an idea specifically of what the, the implications are.
Well, I think in general across the board, you're going to see, you know, the demand for on-street parking, again, without the behavioral change across the board will go up. We haven't done an analysis of all the neighborhoods and how they, how they fare and what their, you know, what their parking absorption is, similar to what we did downtown. You know, where we looked at what was, you know, we did kind of a parking analysis and, and backed into a number on what the rate was. We haven't done that for individual neighborhoods here.
Would that be, you know, as you proceed through approving all of these changes and potentially a variety of different developments in a particular neighborhood, it seems like something you'd want to keep track of, right?
Yeah. And that's where, you know, I think I mentioned that the idea of parking management becomes an issue or it becomes an option to regulate parking in areas that become increasingly congested. So if we did starting, started to experience congestion and parking, the current code does allow residential to get into their, some residential parking enforcement options. You know, that's already in the code. We haven't seen anyone really take it up, but that is on the books and it is an option now.
Right? I noticed in your, your descriptions of the various housing types that you have lot coverage percentages, so on and so forth. It might be useful as an argument going forward if there were some type of comparison between one, one parking scenario requiring two spaces and requiring one space. I don't want to make it onerous or anything. I'm just thinking that it might be an interesting, powerful statistic. Also with respect to the curb cuts, if you could kind of coarsely estimate the reduction in curb cuts and produce that as a statistic, that might be an interesting thing to do. You know, there's things that would provide a some concrete examples of the benefits of taking a particular course.
I think beyond that, I think that our prototypes start to break down. I mean, if it becomes a lot coverage issue, it becomes a, your dwelling unit bonuses and smaller compacts really start to unravel. For example, your cottage, the six-unit cottage that you have in there, adding six more spaces onto, what is it, 10,000 square foot lot, just doesn't become a coverage issue, it becomes a, a non-starter. So and, and that's part of the reason why, why I'm here is if we're, we need to go back and look at this, we, we can. I mean, I can do the numbers on it. If I add 2,000 square feet roughly of a parking space on there for another six units or I could ease, I could easily do the estimate on that. So.
It won't work. I mean, there'd be no way that you could do that many units. I mean, it would just, doesn't function.
Unless you start going up, unless you start going vertical. Yeah, we, we run out of, we run out of real estate.
Yeah.
But I'd be happy to do some mathematics for you.
Other questions? Mark? And then Jessica?
You, you just mentioned going up. I, I see that all these drawings are detached configurations. A, are there attached configurations? And B, can you do two on top of each other and have more open spaces and option within, within the real set? So take one of your six housing configurations, it's going to be three, two stories and, and a tree.
Yeah, uh, there, the, most of them are intended to, to have the opportunity to be attached and detached. It does, when they become attached, they start freeing up some more real estate because of, they don't have, they don't have side yards or they lose one side yard.
Right.
In terms of vertical, it, it is an option. I think we were you know, as, as the code folks less high on that because of probably some limitations on condo development and difficulties of just seeing, seeing that happen as compared to ground level units. But it is, it's, it's a possibility, including actually in your packet, one of the, one of the three flats shows a duplex, a stacked duplex and a single cottage. That's, that's a vertical stack that really reduces some of the, the real estate. But I just think the we're not intentionally avoiding that, but I think the likelihood of that getting built and us getting stacked units becomes, it's, it's just going to be a challenge on the marketplace to see it delivered.
Yeah. And my goal isn't to say that's a good thing or a bad thing. It's to give maximum flexibility to the builders to get creative and find solutions. So if, if we've ruled it out, it's one less thing that they can play with. I guess that's, that's my point.
Yeah, I think we were looking at this as, as length, width and height, limiting really the overall bulk, not necessarily how they're configured within it.
And the code will give them that flexibility?
Yeah.
More questions? Jessica, did you have a question?
Yeah, I just, I'm not really questioning, I guess just to say in general that I'm, I am supportive of reducing the parking and I, and basically letting the market, you know, build that parking if that is what a developer thinks they're going to need. If they think it's going to need more parking, then they can build that. I also, you know, some of the examples were, you know, if it's one and a half over a certain size, you know, and I'm okay with that. I don't know what that size would be. But I, I am okay with, with this as proposed as well.
Okay. That's extremely helpful.
Gladys? I think Gladys had a, did you have a question, Gladys?
Yeah, I do. So Dustin, you were talking about, you know, it would be challenging to build up. First of all, I mean, just thank you for all these visuals here. I am a visual learner and I really appreciate seeing that. But I would really like to see, even though I, I imagine it would be challenging, I don't think it's impossible. So I would still like to look at other options as well, even just going up instead of, you know, going out to the side. Yeah, that was it.
Tim?
Thanks, Mayor. I guess kind of getting back to a point that was brought up in public comment. What, are there developers reviewing these? Are they looped into this? Are you seeking input from them? But we were having a lot of discussions about marketability and buildability.
Yes, there's been a couple people who, who we've been in conversation with, both local developers as well as going through our, our consultant, who's a professional architect, professional architecture firm in Portland to try to broaden that reach. And there's, and the marketability question that we talked about generally was, came from, came from that group from real estate and development team. So there's, that, that's been some of the commentary and we have been outreach with them. So.
And one, just one brief follow-up that, you know, I think reducing the parking requirements makes sense, but you know, it'd be great to you kind of, again, kind of have going into that with our eyes wide open and and aware of the consequences and appetite for particular neighborhoods to absorb that pressure.
And that's, that's the full disclosure part of what we of what I wanted to speak to is that this could, June, just like, not like dissimilar to the conversations downtown. You know, this, this management and stress on street could, is a realistic possibility if, if we don't see behavior change.
I, I'm for reducing the numbers personally. Especially for small units, you know, if you're going to have a 400 square foot unit or 800 square foot unit, if your unit's going to end up being 1,200 to 1,500 square feet, you know, then maybe it should be one and a half. Or if it's a large frontage, for instance, if you had a 10,000 square foot lot and you had a large frontage on the street and you had larger units, then you know, you, you could see, well, we've got one small curb, curb cut and there's quite a bit of opportunity for people to park on the street. So I, I think just taking those things into consideration and, you know, like Gladys had mentioned going up, I, you know, I'm not, I'm not against going up depending. I mean, I know, I know we have apartments and they can go up. I know we have multifamily and they can go up. And whether some of these could be taller, but not be a 5,000 square foot house, but to be a 1,500 square foot or a 1,400 square foot. So we could get more units on, but maybe one and a half spaces per, per unit would be required. So in general, I'm fine with going with, with a smaller number of parking spaces. I think I heard, Megan? What are you, what are your thoughts? I think I've heard everyone else, what they're thinking about, you know, smaller parking requirements were okay, but what were your thoughts on it?
Uh, yeah, I, I'm definitely willing to try out the one space per unit. You know, it sounds like these kind of draft stuff, they're all definitely smaller units and you know, I, yeah, I guess looking at the, the pictures, which again, yes, are definitely helpful. Seems, seems like it's kind of necessary if we actually want to get these units built.
Okay. And I want to acknowledge that we received some written testimony this afternoon because I know sometimes, you know, if we don't mention it, people wonder, well, what the heck? Did you even read what I said? It, it might not be what we are coming up with as we speak tonight. But rest assured, all the written comments that came in today, we all got those and we're able to read those today regarding the subject. Have you got your input you need Dustin on that then?
I do. If we're ready to move on to the, my next issue.
That'd be great.
So this one, again, kind of gets back to the, the scale compatibility issue. Scaling missile, missing middle housing or middle housing to be compatible with the existing neighborhoods and promoting the smaller Scaling missile, missing middle housing or middle housing uh, to be compatible with the existing neighborhoods and promoting the smaller dwelling units. Are really part uh, and essential to the project goals. Uh, and the draft code has been built to limit the size of the dwellings. Not necessarily by setting a ceiling, uh, but rather through setbacks, height limitations, requiring open spaces. So this is intent, again, working and intending to develop a smaller unit package. So. Through that. The. The townhouse product, uh, as we mentioned, they're also considered a part of middle housing, uh, not necessarily in our code. But we regulate them through, through a different part of the zoning code. And. Yet, the townhouse code will allow units and building that is considerably larger in scale. What we anticipate coming out of the middle housing code. Uh, and with its overall size really being equal to a single family home. By code, uh, the townhouse market has been set to be pretty competitive or the development community has stated it's, it's really competitive. And set to be competitive with the single family homes. This size discrepancy. Has been identified as an issue. Not only um, for the purposes of compatibility, but also because uh, it's perceived has been identified as. A disincentive to, and that will negatively impact a developer's willingness to build a missing middle or smaller dwelling unit. Type. Um, if you look at the, the, the code I have up here, if you, if you go to the bottom line. Which is uh, no pun intended, uh, the bottom line of a townhouse, um, in our R2 development shows that. You can yield between about 3,700 and 5,500 square feet of dwelling, whether you do two and three or three stories, which. Today, based on the land unit price, we always see three, we, we see the max. We anticipate the max, it's measured within inches. But on a similar middle housing type, even though you have three dwelling units. We're seeing about 1,800 square feet of, of developed area. And. I have another illustration here. Pointing, uh, in the R3 zone. To the same, oh, excuse me. Back to the bottom line uh, of the slide, the difference between an R3 development. You see our townhouse development, three dwelling units, three stories yielding about 7,000 square feet. On this larger format site, this is a 10,000 square foot prototype, you see it really starting to yield a little more comparable. Outcome, 58, 5,200 square feet, still less, but more, more in line to what we, what we're experiencing.
You're talking about total square footage of all living space, of all the units, of all the units, okay.
With the, that's correct. Uh, total living space, all units, some assumptions taken out uh, for parking. Because we, we have a, you know, they all do require some amount of parking. So with the draft code intended to provide more compact units. And as illustrated in these slides, we, we do see some varying degrees in building gaps. So my, my question for council is here. Do you support narrowing the gap um, through adjustments to the middle housing code? Or, or some other means? Really, we're, we're talking about this code now. And, and looking for your feedback on, on the gap.
My question Dustin is. For clarification of what you're asking us, we currently allow what's on the left of our screen. You're asking about proposing what's on the right of our screen. Are you saying proposing it in addition to what is on the left or eliminating what is on the left?
Oh, no, uh, this would be. Well, you could close the gap through a couple ways. Um. You could adjust the, the middle housing up to allow more development. Uh, and that's really the intent of, of this code is to look at this code. And, in another way, you could, you could take the opportunity to go back and reduce the townhouse size. If you wanted to narrow the gap, those are, those are two options of, of reducing that.
So, so have you talked to developers about this? Because. They still want to build what's on the left. Do they also want to build what's on the right? And even more than they would want to build what's on the left, or do you know?
I think that what is on the left uh, is the preferred product right now. Because.
Right, but we don't have the code for what's on the right yet, but once we get the code, do you think it will be just as preferred as what's on the left?
I'm, I, I think I share the concern that if there's too much of a gap uh, between the two, they won't embrace it. It has to be, it, it doesn't have to be apples for apples. Um, it doesn't have to be 7,000 square feet, you know, every foot counts. But it has to be within the range. So.
And, and that is because you get, um, if you build 7,000 square feet, you're gonna get, you know. $250,000, $250 per square foot, and if you're building 7,000 square feet, you're gonna get more money. If you're only building 4,000 square feet. Of whatever, you're gonna get less money. Is that, is that what you're saying?
It's close. I think that you're, so your, your item on the left is, let's say, for example, you, you build 7,000 square feet. And this ends up being $300, $300 a square foot. Prob- more likely the item on the right becomes a more expensive square foot by square foot. But you end up with less, less size. So you, if you add a dwelling unit, so this is five to the left, six to the right. You're able to make up for, for that to some extent. So you can sell six dwelling units, not, not five. But if you have a. So there, there is a little compensation there. Um, you know, there's, there's a little parity in the marketplace. You don't.
Get more units, but you know, you have to build more bathrooms and build more kitchens and build, you know, build more parking.
And that goes on to the consumer. I mean, that, that, that is passed on. And the other places, you do, they, both. Real estate, um, both lots cost the same.
Yeah, the land's the same price.
Right, you don't get a discount if you're gonna build smaller units uh, when it comes to um, the land basis. So, so that, that also plays into. Some of the marketplace choices. Um, when you're buying a, a lot for a quarter of a million dollars and up. You know, that, that's gonna, they're gonna be choices based on what their, their return is on that.
So you're saying if we don't limit the townhouse size. Then the numbers won't come in close enough to incentivize people to do what's on the right. Is that what you're saying?
I don't think it's just limiting townhouse size. It's also uh, providing some upward adjustment to the middle code. To making sure that they're just, they're a little.
Square, you mean square footages. Instead of saying they have to be 900 square feet or less, we should maybe say they have to be 1,100 or 1,200 square feet or less. Is that what you're saying?
Right, or just.
Okay, just trying to clarify what you're saying here. Sorry about that. Okay, no.
The, the intent is to still stay within the range, maintain the goal of smaller units and still. You know, operating under the assumption that, that, you know, we're, we're gonna build, that developers are gonna build the max. So if we put a ceiling on 1,100 square feet, I believe I'm gonna see 1,100 square foot dwelling units. That is, that's the. That, that's a reality, I think, that we, that we see in our marketplace. So.
And this drawing on the right where we have six units separated, they could be uh, three, three units and three units attached.
Correct.
Okay, which would help with some open space, more open space.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, you, you will have an open space benefit. You could also have a square footage benefit too.
Yeah, okay. All right, additional questions? Megan?
Yeah, um, Dustin, I just don't know this, but does our current townhouse code, like is that. Can you build that same size, single family dwelling if someone wanted to, or does it allow more building than a single family home?
It allows, uh, essentially that the numbers are about the same when it comes to coverage and height. Those are the two determining factors. So our townhouse, all things equal, a townhouse against a single family home. The same volume and mass can occur. The changes become a townhouse code will allow you to do two dwelling units. So splitting the lot and allow you to split the lot in half, uh, and allow you to do two dwelling units under the same volume assumptions.
Okay, so how is it, you know, if, if your single family homes can be as big as these townhomes, how is our compatibility standard for these. Missing middle housing types requiring them to be significantly smaller?
Well, I think that's, that's the, the challenge is, is you wanna remain compact, you wanna split them up and add the dwelling units. I think in this scenario that you have before you, they're smaller, but they're still within a kind of the range. And there's other prototypes that's, that have come across much smaller and then has raised the issue. So they're, they're all comparatively smaller than the townhouse.
I guess I'm, I'm not understanding why.
Why?
Yeah.
It's because that's a code that we're making. We're gonna make a code that says, if you want to build this mini, they have to be this small. Is that correct?
Yes. And will allow, and will allow you to build more of them. So the, the height requirement and the compatibility of a townhouse somewhat been challenged. And that shows up in a reduced height on, on this product. The current requirements for landscaping, there are none. That shows up as a goal in, in this requirement to, to require landscaping.
But single family homes on the same lot don't need to do any of that.
Correct.
So it incentivizes single family big homes still.
Right.
To some extent, yes.
And that, that is with your townhome look, if you wanted to look at that, you could also look at single family. And that's kind of the, the mention that. That we heard before, is there, should you be incentivizing this even more? Making it more. Uh, adding the size requirement for more dwelling units.
Tim, did you have a question? And then Jessica?
Yes, thanks, Mayor. Um. Yeah, this is a, like, it is kind of uh. Confusing. Um, you know, I, I assume that making them smaller is really kind of, is equating to making them. More affordable, or is, is the intent. Really to just increase the number of houses in the number of dwellings and thereby reduce the. Cost of housing, is that how it's, this is addressing that?
Yeah, a smaller unit, all things equal, isn't, the intent is to be a more affordable unit. All things equal, an 1,100 square foot dwelling unit is cheaper than a 1,800 square foot dwelling unit. And then further, that by allowing more of those to be built on the same amount of land, again, this is back to the land basis. The real estate doesn't become any cheaper. So if you're able to do more smaller units, they're intended to be. More cost effective because they're smaller. And also you can spread the cost of infrastructure, frontage improvements. And that land across a greater number of units also uh, addressing an affordability issue.
And so now all this is gonna pencil out for the developer and. Make it worth, worth their while to do that.
That's the intent.
Yeah, that is the intent.
So Dustin, is there any way, I mean, when I look at these pictures, you know, I like the pictures, thank you. But you know, they look, it looks so monotypic. Is there any way, is there any way to accommodate like uh, incentivizing like diversity of. Of housing types and uh, sizes. Particular parcel? Is that something that's been considered?
Well, uh, we definitely considered some size averaging in it. I think we were looking at this as, as really kind of organization and the number of dwelling units and how to accomplish it. And I don't think we've ever thought about a disincentive to, to blend housing type, whether you wanted an 800 or a. Next to a 600, next to 1,200. I think that, that is something that we would encourage by averaging the house size.
Right, but is there an incentive in place to that, to have a developer want to do that?
There's no incentive, it's just, it's allowed. So.
Well, I guess, I'll rephrase it, can there be an incentive?
To, to, sure. There could be an incentive to that.
Because you could, you could, you know, you could have. You know, a smaller house, smaller housing types, not a particular parcel that might be more affordable to you. In general.
Yeah.
And potentially, you know, you could say there would be an incentive because you could say, well, I'm gonna do all 400 square foot studios. You know, and so maybe you could get more on there because square footage wise. You know, you could just get more units, but then you're definitely gonna, you know, if you have that many more units, you're gonna have to have more parking too. So. You know, it all, it, you know, it's all a calculation. It's all a, you know, a, an exercise on paper to figure out what you can do. I think. Anything else, Tim? I think Jessica, did you have a question of, or did you have something else, Tim?
Oh, no, I'm just, you know, I'm just trying to figure out what the decision point is here for us, or for the planning commission, I guess, as it were.
Okay, Jessica?
Well, so the question right now is, do we want to tweak the townhouses? Because what we're talking about is still not going to incentivize people to develop the middle housing. And I think the answer is yes. Um, I mean Dustin's shown us. A couple pictures today to show how the townhouses are not um, very consistent with the neighborhoods. I, I think we've all seen examples where you're like, oh my God, that thing is gigantic compared to the little house next door. Um, so I. Agree with Dustin's idea of reducing the gap between what's allowed in the townhouse and what's allowed in the little housing square footage. I don't know what, what that is, but you know, that's why we have Dustin in the planning commission. I was going to say that, you know, and, you know, Megan's question about, well, what if we don't change the single family housing? I think that, and maybe this is not true at all, but it seems to me that. That a, you know, a speculative developer would still be interested in developing more units on a lot. Than one really big house. So like, let's say you could still build one really big house. Or two smaller townhouses or, you know, multiple middle housing things. It seems to me like not a lot of them would go towards the one really big house. So I don't necessarily see that we need to go all the way. To disincentivizing the one really big house as well for just focusing, and just focusing on the, the townhouses, bringing somehow the. Scale of the townhouses down. And maybe the missing middle up.
Okay, Mark and then Gladys.
With tons of respect for Jessica, I'm, I'm concerned that if we. Disincent their current profit margin for the townhouse and the tiny houses even. Any less of an incentive, um, they're just gonna build big houses. Um, I think that, you know, it's just a bottom line biz. And um, so that I, I would rather see us say, okay, what other. Sugar can we add to the small house, whether it's a little bit more square footage, like you said. Or a little more flexibility in how you configure, you know, so if you have. You know, 7,000 square feet that you can build into six houses or. 6,000 square feet you can build into five and, you know, or some, some schedule like that. That gives them the flexibility to, to stack within height limits or. Lay them out the way that you're talking about or attach or detach or however, they want to do it to, to meet the market demand. I, I think that otherwise we'll, we'll just. Keep getting more of what we got. I, I do think that there's other carrots that we could use, maybe outside of this code. I mean, we can. We can talk about, you know, we already talked about. I mean, we can, we can talk about, you know, we already talked about parking. That's a carrot. You know, maybe there's SDC carrots or, or road carrots or, you know, some other things that, that further make the multifamily, you know, the cottage pencil out.
Gladys?
Yeah, um, to some extent, a little bit of what Mark and Jessica said, I'm, I would like to limit the size of the townhomes because what we have now are the half a million plus dollar homes right now, and that's the town, townhomes that Dustin showed us on the left. What I'd like to see us get to is, you know, option B, the six units on the left where, as Mark said, we offer so many carrots that it's, it would be insane to refuse to want to build more of the cottage style, that kind of house, housing on the right as opposed to the left. So that's where I'd like to see us get to.
I'd like to see us get to the, um, you know, more units on a lot and, you know, between 400 and I'm even up to 1500 square foot. You know, that's a pretty big range, but I think that's a range that we don't have because I think we have a lot of 15 to 2,000 to 2,500 to 3,000 and even higher. So I think something below 1500, but I'm not, you know, I don't think it has to be 900. I think there's families that have, you know, several children and they, they can't, it's really hard to live in an 800 square foot home or a 600 square foot home. And so I think being able to go up to 1500 is something I'd like to see. I'm okay with going up to some extent. And I agree with Mark. Um, I think if we limit the townhomes, we're going to get more big 6,000 square foot, single family homes. So I don't, you know, prefer necessarily the townhomes that we have that are big. But I even less prefer a 6,000 square foot, single family home when you could have three units on a lot, even if they're big. So, you know, I, I just, I'm afraid if we, if we limit that, we're just going to get more big, single family homes. Yeah, I mean, we can try it, see what happens. And, you know, we can talk to the builders because they're the ones that are going to be doing it. You know, if we limit these townhomes, what are the builders going to say? They're going to say, well, I'm just going to put a 6,000 square foot home up. Yeah, I don't know. Let's ask them. Let's talk to them about it. I think that's, you know, we should get their input on that kind of thing. Because they're the ones that are going to build them. And if we say, well, you have to build a smaller townhome, are they going to say, no, we're just not going to do that? That's the thing we won't build anymore then. We'll just do single family. Um, Gladys?
Yeah, I absolutely agree with you, Kate. Uh, we should be talking, Mayor, we should be talking to builders now. So that again, you have single families, townhomes, and then you've got this cluster cell, the middle code housing. How do we get to the point where, again, they can still build these options, but option three is so good and so financially good to them that they're going to want to do more of that. So we, we can still have all this diverse housing here or the two options of housing. How do we make the diverse housing, the middle code housing? How do we make that just so financially feasible incentive to the point where that's the option folks are going to choose because financially it's the best option for them or a very good option for them?
At, at least as good, not worse. Go ahead, Dustin.
All right, with the, uh, the, kind of the, the item is getting a sense that you're comfortable moving, you know, narrowing the gap through allowing the housing code or the middle housing code to, to expand its size, to not be so different. And then it sounds like there's still also interest in uh, at least taking a look or evaluating the townhouse as it sits now to look, to estimate that. Is that the two, kind of two options that I'm seeing?
I mean, if we're going to look at.
The, the consensus here.
Yeah, Meghan?
Sorry. Uh, yeah, I guess if we're going to look at townhome, I, and this is a whole other thing, but like I, if, if people are going to just flip over to single family, like I want to look at that too, or I don't know what the mechanisms are, but I'd like to not, to funnel in the right direction instead of we funnel backwards.
Development community, that concern that if, if you're punitive against the townhouses, there's a risk, they represent, there's a risk of going the opposite way. That will get your townhouses, we'll get, like, we'll just go back to the single family home because we can build the square footage we want. So there is, there's definitely balancing there that we need to be mindful of.
Right. So yeah, so whatever mechanism or, or multiple mechanisms you guys can figure out as smarter people than us, like fun, funnel towards these missing middle, smaller units. I don't know. I'm going to let you figure that out because I don't know.
I think you've got consensus from us, Dustin. Now, don't you kind of have a direction on it?
Yeah, that's, I think the, that was the, the funneling, funneling through multiple channels, multiple ways, multiple layers.
Okay. And Tim, did you have one more thing?
Um, yeah, I just want to, I just want to kind of, I think, reiterate what Mark was saying. I don't want to speak for Martha, you know, the, the idea of having carrots with this. I mean, you know, I don't, personally, I don't know whether building the eight, eight to $900,000 townhomes is going to solve anything in our community, to be perfectly honest with you. And so we need to be able to figure out a way to get to something that we want. And I guess I have, I, I just questioned whether this, this last discussion is actually going to get us there. So with respect to like consensus, I just want to express my kind of concerns and reservations.
I think it's a beginning. I think this is, um, you know, a really good start and the planning commission's working on it. And, you know, it's just at a point that they need some input from us. So I think there's going to be a lot more to it when we get done. All right. Is, is that all you need from us, Dustin?
I got exactly what I needed. Thank you all very much for your time and, uh, through waiting through this. We'll, we'll be back with more information.
Okay, all right. Um, trees on private property. Haley? Is she on? There she is. Great. We're going to do this one and then we're going to take a five minute break after this one before we start regular council meeting.
Hello, thank you. So like you said, I'm here to talk about trees on private properties. So this is a follow-up to our June 8th council meeting where we talked about the same topic. So at that meeting, US Council provided direction to do a little bit further research on how other cities regulate trees. So I have done that and I've ran that research past the tree committee. And I've gotten their input and assistance on the research in general. And then I used that research to create the matrix that we will go over that the tree committee also reviewed. So I'm going to share my screen. And I do want it to be noted that this will offer multiple options. And multiple of these options can be pursued at the same time if desired. So the big question for this matrix is what should we do to encourage tree preservation on private property? So I've outlined three options with concerns, advantages and disadvantages for each. So the first is removing liability. So the concern there is that tree removal is occurring to avoid the liability trees pose in the land reviews, use review portion of the development process. So more trees than necessary are removed to avoid regulatory protection of those trees later in the process. So what might be done there is to remove the incentive to preemptively remove trees from a development site prior to beginning the land use review process. An advantage is that little to no additional staff time would be required. Disadvantages include that developers may still see tree preservation as a liability and remove trees anyways. And that tree regulation would not be present at any stage in the development process. Meaning there would be no proactive protection of mature native trees, just the passive protection that we currently have. Another option is to add incentives. The concern here is that tree removal is occurring with no penalty. So an advantage of what could be done is to encourage tree preservation by offering incentives to developers. Incentives could include density bonuses, variation in parking requirements, lot size averaging, variation in open space requirements, project publicity and stormwater SDC credits. Some disadvantages include code changes to include incentives in the development process should be completed on the same timeline as changes to the zoning code and engineering standards. Developers may choose to not use the offered incentives with still no penalty. And incentive levels needed for tree preservation would need to be compared against other city interests such as availability of developable land. The third option is regulation of all trees. That concern is that tree removal is occurring with no regulation for tree preservation in the development process until the land use reveal. What could be done is to require tree preservation by regulating tree removal citywide. This would allow us to not need to distinguish between developed and undeveloped properties and a citywide tree inventory could be created. Disadvantages to this option include city staff time needed to monitor and enforce the citywide regulation program. And a penalty may be needed for failure to comply. Additional costs may be required to develop a citywide tree inventory. So those are three options that I have based on my research. Are there any questions?
Mark?
So can you give us a summary of what the tree committee said?
Sure. So the tree committee off of this matrix was pretty much in agreement that any of these options could be good at some level depending on the final outcome of each option. So with those advantages and disadvantages and the council input of what exact direction?
So you didn't have a recommended one or two or whatever?
No, the general consensus from them was that any of these options would be beneficial to some degree for the preservation of trees on private property.
I have opinions, but I will wait until after we get past the question part.
Any other questions for Haley? It, it looks pretty spelled out here. That's great. Tim?
Uh, just, just briefly Haley, you know, you said that you had gone to city, other cities and kind of to help formulate this matrix. Can you give us an idea of what cities you looked at?
Sure. I looked at numerous cities. I looked at Lake Oswego, Portland, Bend, some Mamish, Redmond. I looked at numerous Troutdale, Wilsonville. Really, I looked at probably 15 different cities of varying sizes to try to get just as much information as I could of how other cities do regulate trees on private property.
So for all those cities then, that they did have some form of tree regulation? Would that, that be correct?
Some form of true regulation or none. So there was some that is similar to kind of the first and second options put together that they just kind of self-regulate based on incentives and have incentives to the level that developers choose to self-regulate.
So the, the non-regulation you're referring to is the incentive route?
So, and that was, um, it seemed to be with more larger cities that had that kind of option. I was having a little bit of difficulty throughout my research, finding a city that was similar in size to Hood River. A lot of cities I found were much larger population bases.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, uh, opinions. So Mark, you have some ideas or some opinions. Go ahead.
So, so I, I was afraid that we were going to be asked which of these one rows that we wanted to use when it seems like the, all three are complementary or certainly the top two are complementary. My sense is we need to do something. My sense is also that if we defined for the bottom row, if we defined it as just trees that are 15 inches or, you know, some just large trees, it's not, this is all trees and, and that, I, I think that that's silliness. But, but if, if we defined it to be, you know, significant trees, both the survey wouldn't be that, that bad since we have Google, Google Earth. And we have, um, and the enforcement wouldn't be that, that bad. Haley, did you see anything where people just had to apply for a permit to cut something down as opposed to not being allowed to? Is that, is that how it worked in the third case?
I did see a lot of cities that had a permit with a permit fee and the permits were variable in their complexity from just a single page, fill it out to having a site assessment and an arborist review before that permit was reviewed and accepted by the city.
All right. So I, I think we should do so, I guess, just to sum up my point is I think we should do something. I think we should even see if there's a low impact way to do the third row. But that's certainly the first two.
So say that again, Mark, where are you? Just when it comes to these three things?
The first two rows are complementary. They're not in competition.
Okay.
So I, I think that, um, those are good things to do. I think the third row is also complementary and that, that there is a way to do low hurdle implementation of that. I mean, you, you can, the, the range of implementation complexity in the third row is really wide. So, so I would, I am optimistic that we can do something simple. Maybe it's even if, if there isn't consensus for that, maybe that's a future step given that we see how the first two rows go.
Okay, others? Meghan?
Yeah, I'll go. Um, so yeah, given, given our current landscape of, um, you know, the regulation only during the land use process does seem to be creating an incentive for people to just cut everything down ahead of time because they don't know what they're going to do. I, I think there would be an improvement if we just remove the liability in this first one. Not my highest priority of things we're doing this year, but I'm open to talking about incentives as we talk about incentives for other things. I, I respectfully disagree with Mark that there is an easy way to do any sort of regulation of all trees in the city or all trees of a certain size in the city. And I'm, and I'm not particularly interested in that at this point. You know, going, going to the thing we kind of have been harping on of like, what's my top three things for this year? That is not where I want to put staff time and resources. So that's where I'm at.
Okay, others? Jessica?
I'm more in line with Meghan. I, there is part of me that worries about taking away any kind of protection of the trees during the land use review process, but I recognize that it is causing some of the trees to be removed. So I don't know, I guess I'm not really sure on that one. I do like the idea of using incentives somehow then. So I guess maybe if you do take it away, then using some kind of incentive so that folks would still want to keep their trees. And I am, I don't know, I'm, I'm not super excited about regulating protection of all trees. Maybe, kind of like what Mark said, maybe that's like, you know, in the future if it's not working out or something. Yeah, and I agree that on the, the staff time thing, just. Yeah, and I agree that on the staff time thing, just is something to keep in mind with everything else that's going on.
Others? I'll go ahead and go. And then Tim after me. I agree with Megan. I'd like to remove the liability because I think that just, you know, cut them down because then we don't have to worry about it. Prior to doing some development. So I think removing that liability, I'd be all in favor of doing that. But then putting in incentives when we do this other work that we would just put it in with the other work that we have to do for the code changes that we're talking about to do some incentives. You know, and maybe some, you know, a really, you know, some really great incentives for trees that are a certain size or bigger, but you know, that would be all in the details later. I don't want to get into that right now. I'm not into regulating all trees. I just think it's just too much, even if it's, you know, trees that are 15 inches or bigger. You know, inventorying, you know, I just think we don't have the time for it right now. So I'm agreeing with Megan's opinion on it. Tim?
Thanks, Mayor. I guess I would have reservations about removing the liability. I'm not exactly sure what that means. To be perfectly honest with you. Haley, could you, could you give us an idea of what removing liability means?
So I can. I might call upon Dustin as well to explain it a little bit better than me. But so in the current process, it appears that developers are removing trees prior to applying to the land use review process as throughout that process, they have to be responsible for those trees. So they're removing more trees than necessary to avoid the regulations present in the land use review process.
Because when you turn in your land use application or your building permit, you have to put down what trees are on your property right now, how big a diameter they are, how big of the drip line is. And if you want to put a building anywhere close to that, then there's a question about whether, oh, well, maybe you can't put in a you know, 2,000 square foot home or a thousand square foot home. Maybe your home's going to only be 800 square feet or 500 square feet because that tree is going to encroach and the city is going to say, you've got to keep it. So they just cut it, cut it down, take it out. Then you can get what you want to build.
So but how, Kate, how is removing the liability actually going to take care of that problem? Because really in the end, that's going to happen one way or the other. So if you have a building plan and there is a site plan such that you can't put a water line somewhere because there's a tree there, I mean, you're going to have to take the tree down one way or the other, but you know.
I can tell you how it works. So if so if we didn't have this regulation, if we got rid of this regulation, builders wouldn't cut down the trees prior to coming in and talking to the city, or they may not. And you know, like it says in here, they may and they may not. But it's less likely that they would just cut them all down because they could come in and they could work with the city to try and figure out how to do something different. And they might take down two trees instead of three because, you know, they'd think, oh, I'm not going to be in trouble. They're not going to force me to make my buildings smaller if I come in and I haven't cut down that tree. But right now, they, you know, the city might say, oh, no, you have to save that tree. So they're just going to cut it. So I think there's more flexibility and less fear that they're going to get in trouble. So that's what removing liability is about for the builder.
Thanks for that example, Mayor. It would be great to actually, which cities were doing that, Haley?
So it was kind of a combination. I would have to look back at my notes. But all three of these options were from a combination of different cities in different pieces of different cities' regulation protocols.
Right. So you had some cities that removed liability, but then added the incentives.
Well, that's interesting. If I could jump in, it's removing the liability is basically not regulating them through the land use process. It is not something active that the city does.
Well, I would like to see how that's working for the cities personally.
So there are cities that just simply don't regulate. More common, Haley, correct me if I'm wrong, in some of the rural, more rural areas, eastern Oregon.
Correct.
Others?
With respect to, yeah. You know, I'm all for adding incentives as well. I'm going to maintain my, just through ignorance, I guess, ignorance of the efficacy of removing liability. I'm just going to maintain my my uneasiness with that one. With respect to regulating trees, you know, I can understand that regulating all trees is one thing, but what I'm kind of wondering is that if we could, you know, provide some type of regulation about the number of trees that one can take down at a time. And that might actually, we could say is like could take down no more than two trees that are 15 inches in diameter per year or something like that without sometimes at least having some type of permit or some type of review. That might, maybe that might help reduce, we still the original impetus behind this, which was the clear cutting of trees to facilitate development. So I guess that's kind of a mishmash of different things there, but you know, with adequate proof, I guess I could support through moving the liability part of it. And then I think we definitely should add incentives for people to retain the trees. But then would be interested at the least of trying to limit the number of trees that you can take down at any one time.
Gladys? I think everyone has spoken, but.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. You know, I believe we absolutely should be adding incentives. I guess first of all, let me say that I too don't feel 100% about just being educated about trees and the size and, you know, all of that. As you know, as Counselor Saunders mentioned, to be honest, this is not a priority for me for the year or something that I want to allocate staff time for the next year. I'd rather have everyone working on housing or transportation or many other things. I believe we should add some sort of incentive. And that's it for me. Thank you.
Okay. Do you think you kind of have enough direction, Haley, on kind of where we are?
I think so.
Okay. All right, great.
Yeah, I think we got it. Thank you very much, Mayor and Councilors. Yes. And just to reiterate, I think what we heard was, you know, let's look at some of those incentives maybe as a first step and then we can look at the other two kind of along the way and as we go. So that's what we'll bring back and incentives along with some of the other code updates that we're looking at. So thanks very much.
Not as a separate item, but as we're looking at the other code update. So it's just kind of consolidated with the other things. Okay.
Thank you very much.
Five minutes, you guys, and we'll be back on. We're going to just take a recess for five minutes. Thanks. Ready to start? Just waiting for Mark.
Sorry, I have the world's slowest teak at a list.
Okay, we're all back. All the councilors are here again. So we're going to go ahead and we finished our presentation on trees. And so we're going to adjourn the work session and we're going to open the regular council meeting. Do we have any agenda additions or corrections?
No, Mayor, we do not.
Okay, so now we will go to the consent agenda, which I mistakenly tried to do too early last an hour ago or more. So on the consent agenda, we have council meeting minutes, OLCC permit, annual taxi business permit renewals, waterfront storm line financing resolution. Does anyone need anything removed or question on anything before we talk about the minutes or about the consent agenda approval? Megan?
Yeah, I had two edits till the December 18th minutes. I don't know if we need to pull it off or if we can just do that.
Is it long or substantive or just something small?
They are substantive because they drastically changed the meaning of.
Oh, okay. All right. Well, let's go through them. Go ahead and go through them. What page are they on?
So page 64 of the packet. Under what type of housing are appropriate? My Counselor Saunders comment. Happy to see a mix of all housing types, fully acknowledging, given that they are aiming for income, the conventional single family dwelling is best. That's more, I think I said something like the conventional single family dwelling is unlikely to happen. I definitely didn't say it was best. So I'd like that corrected.
Okay.
And then page 66, first paragraph. Also my comment. Third line, she does not want the 80 to 120% to be cottage clusters. And I think it was to be just cottage clusters.
Be what?
Instead of just the cottage clusters, it was to be just cottage clusters.
Just cottage, okay. Okay, all right. Anything else?
Those are my two.
Okay. City problem changing. Counselor Saunders changes to her quotes. Okay, consent agenda then with changes to council meeting minutes. Per Megan.
I move I move to approve the consent agenda with Megan's edits to the minutes as noted.
I will second.
Okay, Jessica has made a motion to approve the consent agenda with the changes that Megan has asked for. Megan has seconded consent agenda. Any other comments? All those in favor can roll call. Jessica?
I.
Tim?
I.
Gladys?
I.
Mark?
Yes.
Okay, Megan?
Yes.
Do we have Eric here? Okay, all right. The consent agenda is approved. Regular business items. Public safety building solicitation, reviews and approval. Will?
Hey, thank you, Mayor and City Council and quite a bit on tonight's agenda. So I appreciate your staying late to work through all these issues quite a bit on your agenda tonight. What we have here is a review and the solicitation for the next steps in the planning for Hood River's first ever police facility. Hood River has never had a purpose-built police facility. Said departments have, the department has shifted from one downtown office space to another. Similar to a doctor in a hospital or a teacher in a classroom, policing is a specialized profession that benefits from a tailored space. The department is currently housed in the daylight basement of the city's 100-year-old city hall in a space that used to be a pull-through for fire engines. The space lacks secure and IT-equipped interview rooms for suspects, soft interview rooms for victims, or professional meeting space for attorneys and prosecutors. It also lacks ventilation for evidence processing, emergency power, or safe vehicle ingress egress onto State Street. The first, the city first identified a purpose-built police facility in the mid 1990s when the city of Hood River was 40% smaller and was just catching on as a national tourist destination. The second effort to build a fire police station was along with the fire and EMS. It was going to be a joint public safety building in the mid 2000s, but ultimately voters were only asked to build the fire station on Myers Parkway. The planning effort for a first-ever police facility resumed in 2018 with the notion that it would give time to determine, to have a preliminary design and cost estimates in case the city council wanted to forward to voters in 2022 the option to extend bonding authority from the fire station so that no one would see a difference in their taxes from one year to the next. The city council hired McKinsey Architecture in 2019, the same architects that built the fire station. They did a space program to estimate what the city's space needs are. We took, project team took facility tours to see what modern policing facilities look like and the functionalities that they have. And then we moved on to site evaluations, ranking seven sites across the city and ranking most highly the Columbia lot. After getting to this stage in the process, after about a year and a half in the Hood River County, which had done their own planning for a public safety building in 2015, but had also abandoned that project. They had passed their public safety operating levy, putting them on more stable footing. And they were able to express interest in potentially engaging with us on joint capital facility planning. But their commissioners were not able to give a firm commitment until the scope and the cost of the project were known. With that information, the city council directed staff to create a joint solicitation for two projects. One being a joint city-county public safety building, which would include a courthouse. And so we can get price and scope for that so that the county can know whether or not they want to join us in that effort. But then also because this will be the same pool of candidates, architectural firms also get a proposal for Project B, which is just a continuation of our existing process that started in 2018. Moving forward to preliminary design and cost estimation, but adding on the components of a parking garage and also office space for Columbia Gorge Children's Advocacy, which has recently changed their name to Safe Space Children's Advocacy Center. So issuing this sort of compound solicitation is a time and cost savings for us and allows us maximum flexibility to move forward in either case. Should the county choose not to participate with us. Some of the sort of most important components of this solicitation is it clearly communicates that Project A is the priority for the city if the county chooses to partner with us. Notes that the addition of Safe Space Children's Advocacy Center and that downtown, an increase to downtown parking ability is the goal if the courthouse is located downtown and specifically if we move forward with the Columbia lot. I've also moved facility tours ahead of space programming so that everyone can get up to speed on what the state of modern facilities are and how and sort of learn the functionalities before we start planning what our space looks like. And then also vendor selection is separated into two rounds, only asking for cost proposals after we've had, after the evaluation team has had a chance to meet and talk with the potential proposers and to shortlist them. And the reason for that is, you know, there's only so much understanding you can get through on written paper. And so I wanted to have the ability for us to meet, have a two-way conversation so they really understand what we're wanting before quoting us a price. There's also a fair bit of public involvement, both general public involvement, so any and all comers, and also targeted focus group style invitations so we can proactively reach out to groups that we want to talk with. And I've put in there that could be behavioral health or next door or a community group like that, but it's really open-ended. And it could be whoever the city council thinks needs to have a proactive invite style engagement into this project. As far as fiscal impact, Project A is basically starting from the beginning, although we have a lot of work done in our As far as fiscal impact, Project A is basically starting from the beginning, although we have a lot of work done in our in each agencies, city, county, and at Children's Advocacy Center, each of us have already put a lot of work into our space needs. So we won't be fully starting from scratch, but we will be starting the process from the very beginning. So that, and that project is going to be for a building that could be, you know, anywhere from sixty to maybe even seventy-five thousand square feet. So obviously that project will be much more expensive. But it will also be split in cost between all the partners, including even the Urban Renewal Agency. If it includes a downtown parking increase. Project B expected to be much, much smaller in scope, continuation of our existing work around maybe fifteen to seventeen thousand square feet. And that would be split between just the city, the Children's Advocacy Center and Urban Renewal. This solicitation in no way obligates the city to pay for any costs of the potential proposers or to move forward with either Project A or Project B or move forward through to construction. However, questions about what the potential cost of future construction buildings always seems to come up. So I included some tables in your staff report and I'll be ready to talk through what a final building could hypothetically cost and what that would look like to taxpayers. If the city council has questions about that. But mostly tonight, we just want to know, did the solicitation meet the city council's expectations from September twenty-eighth? And do you want us to move forward issuing this or make adjustments? And with that, I'll answer any questions that the council may have.
Okay, thank you, Will. Does anyone have questions regarding you know, specifics to what is written on the proposals for? I mean, we know, we know where we are. We've got an A and a B on these solicitations. We've read through what those solicitations would be. So do we have specific questions about those solicitations and how that would work just for the logistics to ask Will? I think we should just start with that first. Gladys?
Yeah, I just want to ask this question of, you know, say that we were all in agreement to move forward with something with the county. But that we give the very clear direction that that is done collaboratively with community partners such as William and, you know, mental health services and what that would look like. I guess what would that look like, Will? If we all decided to move in that direction?
Yeah, so that would be, there's, so it's mostly in the, in the design phase, which for Project A is multiple steps down the road. Well, and there's also touchstone on the space program itself. But it's all going to start off with, you know, our first communication with the architectural firm is going to be during their proposal creation process. That's why I put it into two steps. So we'll talk to them about really what we're wanting to see. And then they're going to bring their expertise to saying how they think we could get at that goal of engagement to the, to the right parties. So then they're going to build that to their proposal and their costs. And it's going to be part of the scope of work. Then there'll be a kickoff meeting with the project team. That'll be another place to reiterate who we want to engage with and when. And there'll be some process going into the space, space program section. So it gets, you know, but as we saw, that's mostly just spreadsheets of numbers. Where really, where the rubber is really going to hit the road is during preliminary design. And that's where we actually get into flow. Floor plans, design aesthetic, and some of the more programmatic elements of the structure. And that's where we have right now, we really just needed to say budget for. But we'll have all the way from now until that preliminary design to guide them as to who they need to engage with and how.
Here's the part where I feel like while I understand what you just said, at the same time I don't because I understand that originally it's just to talk about the facility. But I keep saying that when you're talking about the facility, you're already assuming that the facility is going to be X big to accommodate X amount of staff. So I'm just going to be blunt and brief, guys, that I am not interested in pursuing a city police department on our own. And this is not a priority project for me for the year, for two thousand and twenty-one. I would consider moving forward if the county is on board and that from the beginning we are stating we need to have all of these folks involved with the city and the county from the beginning. So being mental health, different programs that the designers are working with community partners to help guide them because right now the way that this is being designed is basically will by you or Jeff or other folks and I, I need to hear from community partners that are saying, that are guiding and directing you guys on this is going to work because of this, or this isn't going to work because of this. So I feel like leaving it up to consultants is not necessarily the, the best. So I appreciate the staff's time into this, but this is not a priority for me this year. Thank you.
Okay.
Actually, wait, hold on. Sorry, one last thing. And for my fellow peers, as you are about to make decisions, I would like to just have you take a moment to think of the words that Ms. Petzing just mentioned to us all. We are all elected officials. We have all been put here by our constituents. Ms. Petzing is not the only community member that has stated what she did this morning or this evening. And I would really encourage you all to think about, are you willing to put the time and effort and your name onto this?
Okay. Others, questions for Will? Regarding the specifics, that's where we were starting. Which we did. And then Gladys got her things answered and then gave her where she is. Others? Does anyone want to go?
Are we, sorry, are we done with questions?
Yeah, yeah. If we, I mean, if no one has any specific questions regarding the proposal, then we could go with thoughts. So if you want to go with thoughts, we can do that now.
Okay.
Megan?
I'll try not to ramble too much.
Okay.
Yeah, so I guess where I, and I've talked to a lot of people and been thinking about this a lot, but where I'm, where I'm at is I don't see any way we're going up for a bond this year. Honestly, probably not even in twenty-two, given the world. Right now, I don't think a standalone city facility is something I'm interested in pursuing right now. Acknowledging, we obviously have some real needs that I think aren't sufficient for the community. And how I would like the community served in our current facility. So clearly, there's a rub there. But I think it, it would be really important to this community, both in the city and in the county, for, for us to, to give it a real shot with county. To build collaboration and build partnership and ideally get to a point where we have a joint facility, ideally with also a lot of other community partners, knowing that it's going to take, to do that well would take a lot of time. I am very open to seeing that go forward this year. I, I think kind of touching on what Gladys was going towards of, you know, in the actual RFP, I was kind of seeing this circular thing of I know the last time we touched base with the county, they said, get an RFP, give us a number, we'll say yes or no at that point. But the RFP itself, you know, has already obviously assumed a scope of work and, and a very, you know, kind of that conveyor belt thing we've all been talking about in previous meetings. Whereas I think to do this really well, both with the community and with the county involves this, this kind of starting, starting further back beyond just this facility of like, what are our goals? What's our vision? What do we want this all to look like? Who do we want to be in there? What are the opportunities and challenges? That then would kind of decide what you're building the space for. Versus we just take the two space needs analyses we have now and, you know, mush them together. So I don't quite know how to do it. That's the chicken and egg thing of like, the county hasn't officially said they're on board until we do this RFP and get a number. But I feel like we can get a number for an RFP that probably isn't the one I want to see actually happen. Which doesn't seem super useful. So I'd like to pursue stuff with the county. I think they are interested based on some conversations I've had with folks. But I don't know quite the, the order of operations to, to move that forward where we are right now. Besides, maybe just getting elected officials together to really talk about how we could do this.
Elected officials being the city council and the county commission. Is that what you're referring to?
I think that would, I guess I'm picturing that as a first step of we could actually figure out how to do this and how to, how to do both internally to the two of us and ideally externally with a lot of the community. Like, how do we actually build a process that that does encompass all of these things?
And I want to bring one thing into the conversation just a little bit, and it's a little bit early because it's really going to be coming up in organizational updates this evening. And Rachel's going to talk about a community services presentations. And I think that that is going to be some information, a teeny bit of information that we're going to be able to get as a council about what's going on in the community, what's needed, what organizers are doing. It isn't necessarily from the people receiving those, but it will be from the people giving those services. And that is what I believe Gladys and you, Megan, are referring to. Some of these other services that might be able to be benefit from this, this building be incorporated into. So I think getting as much information as we can. And that's what you're talking about. Prior to going forward with doing, you know, potentially an RFP or the RFP may incorporate doing some of that. So I just wanted to mention that we are going to have an update from Rachel on that here shortly. Any other thoughts? Mark?
So, um, similar. I think that this RFP is eighty percent final text. But I think that we have to have, before it can go out, that we have to have the program discussion with the county because otherwise we're just going to have to repeat it. I am interested in having that discussion with them. I mean, some of the things that I've been thinking about is like, well, you know, where does Belinda's group, is that, is that part of the building? Is, is county health part of the building? They're in an old piece of junk building up in the Heights right now. You know, all these different things that affect the, the process here. So, so to me, it's, I would suggest putting this on not dusty shelf, but just an old block of ice at hand and, and start in earnest the discussion with the county finding out. Can we do a programming discussion so that we can go get the RFP and get those first numbers that can then feed the, the feedback loop kind of thing? I think that us doing that without talking to all the different parties is, is just doomed to have to be redone. You know, so this is nothing against the process today. I think it's just sort of saying, okay, what, what if county-city combination or collaborative building is the goal, and I, and I think that that's the right way to go. You know, what's, how does that look? And I think that having, getting an RFP with the design firm before we have the program. You know, I don't support it. So, so my proposal is that we shell this until, till we get a mile or two on that process. So that's where I am.
Okay. And I think a little bit of that, talking about the program, such as having behavioral health and next door, as was mentioned in the RFP already, is a start. But I believe that what I'm hearing from Megan and Mark and Gladys is they would like to see something way more robust than a couple sentences in part of this. And they would like it moved to the beginning of a process versus further down the road. I just want to mention for people that are listening to that, you know, when we say we're building a physical facility because our population is going to grow and we feel we're going to need more. And I'm not going to say we need more officers. I'm going to say we need more people to help us help people. Whatever that might be, whatever that might be, mental health, that might be, you know, whatever that might be. So this facility isn't necessarily to add more officers. There may be some more officers added, maybe, but there might not. There might be mental health people added. So, but being, being able to have a facility that is, that will work to do either one. If we need to add more officers, we can. If we need to add more mental health people, we can. So it's flexible enough to be able to do that. And I think that's what we want to get at when we want to plan a facility so that we, we aren't pigeonholed into one particular type of structure that won't work for, for numerous possibilities. And I think that's what the community wants to see. They want to see something flexible, something that, you know, we can we can go different directions with it if we, if we decide to in the future because who knows what it's going to be in ten or twenty or thirty or forty years. So I think we need to be very thoughtful. And I think people are telling, what I've heard so far is people are saying we need to take more time to be more thoughtful on the front end to make sure that we're doing that. And I know that the community has likely heard a lot of, you know, we're just going to add more officers. That's not necessary, not necessarily true. That, that isn't necessarily what this building will be for. But I think we need to be able to articulate that, that that fact to people. So that, that's my take on what I've heard so far and where I, I feel that I'm hearing people say so far. Jessica or Tim? Jessica, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I this is probably going to be a bunch of rambling, unconnected thoughts. My apologies. I am. I understand and support what my other fellow councillors have said. I, at the same time, I'm worried that you know, like Will said, you know, twenty years ago, we talked about this because it was something that we needed and nothing happened. And, and I don't think the current police facility is adequate. It's not serving our, is not protecting our victims, is not protecting our suspects, it's not professional, it's not serving the community. And I think it's so if we, if we're putting this on ice or on a not dusty shelf, I mean, I think the what I'm seeing is I think we do still need to be making this a priority, even if it's, you know, prioritizing having those conversations right now. Because I think we do need to get moving on something, knowing that even if we have conversations now, it's going to take some time to pass the bond. It's going to take some time to finish the design. And so maybe we're still even, you know, three to five years out of having a facility. So I do think that, I just want to keep that in people's mind. I don't think that the current facility is serving our community. I do, I, and so that's where I feel like, you know, we could, you know, if, if we do this RFP right, you know, we're talking about designing a flexible space and I could see that these conversations happening at the same time. One of the things I was going to point out to that Will has expressed is that the when we went up for the bond for the fire department, you know, we didn't have any kind of ideas about the design. It was just, you know, let's see, this is the amount of money that we think we're going to need. And then we did the design. So that's where I, I'm still like, maybe I'm the only one out there, but I, I feel like that opportunity of that fire bond expiring is just kind of blazed into my mind and you know, whether you know, we're starting those conversations now about what this future space could look like. And I appreciate and I recognize And I appreciate and I recognize that, you know, the mayor mentioned that Rachel's bringing back. Today, we're even going to start talking about what mental health in the community looks like. And, you know, staff is doing, starting that work and bringing it to us. So I don't know where that, I promise it would be rambling. Thank you.
Thanks, Jessica. Thoughts, Tim?
Thanks, Mayor. Yeah, I think that slowing it down and kind of coordinating with everybody that everybody's been talking about is going to allow us an opportunity. And then this, I, I feel like this discussion is kind of affirming some of the uneasiness that I've been having as we've proceeded through the, the final stages of this process where I think that, that we weren't having the discussions that we needed to have. Certainly with, with the county, I'm fully exploring that. But also, you know, trying to follow through on some of the things that we had put in the equity resolution. Where we're going to like look at and kind of, you know, kind of assess and, and re-envision, you know, what helping the people in our community looks like. So, you know, I, I think that this, you know, having an opportunity to do this more, I guess I won't say more thoroughly because obviously, you know, what was done was thorough. But I think expanding, expanding the conversation to include these other things. And actually expanding these conversations to actually incorporate and discuss some of the things that we're thinking with the county. I think is going to be very helpful as well. And, you know, letting them know some of our thoughts with respect to some of the stuff that we put in the equity resolution and how, you know, how, how we feel about that. So. You know, I, I agree, you know, that we should, you know, obviously actively pursue the conversation. But I think we should do with kind of like an expanded view of what we're talking about. So it's not just, it's not just the building. It's more like, it's, it's bigger than the building. It's more conceptual about how we want to approach policing in our community.
Okay, I'm going to try and summarize a little bit what I've heard so far. I don't think there's a lot of thoughts about going to version B at this point. At least not starting it right now. For the city alone. Everyone keeps, you know, talking about, talking to the county, talking to the county, talking to the county. And we could go with A and B, but a lot, you know, I don't, I don't hear a lot of people saying we should go to B right now. Let's just keep with the county, see what happens first. That's where I'm, that's what I think I'm hearing. If, if we even go with A, if we even go with A, I've just heard no B right now. That's all I'm saying. For A, which would involve the county, I'm hearing people say, just in general, everyone isn't exactly on this page, but in general, consensus is that we would like more robust conversations regarding what would be happening and other partners we could involve with this. Prior to going into space needs. You know, even if an RFP said, we have one, we have A, number one, and that is the conversation piece. We need to get a contractor to help us do that. And bring in all these other partners, get their opinions. And then we could go to the second portion of A and go to the space needs after we know what we want to have in those spaces. But maybe we just need to do the first part first. So am I, I, I need to see what, what do you guys think? Am I summarizing this potentially correctly? Gladys?
To me, you are. And I, you know, want to, as Megan said, acknowledge and recognize that I'm fully aware, and I'm just speaking for myself, that what the police department has now in regards to, you know, that ugly couch where victims are coming and sitting in. I don't think that's appropriate. I think we should look into some temporary solutions to try and fix that. But not building a brand new facility.
For the city, okay. Can others give me more feedback if I'm summarizing this correctly or if you want to say that I'm not?
Um, sorry.
Go ahead, Megan.
I'll just make it clear in the talk. Yeah, I guess I think, I think you are, especially for all of us combining that. I guess I, I am kind of seeing it as that we have to kind of do the first one before we can really do the second. Because if, if we, if we do the first one right, you know, it shouldn't be the city alone that is figuring out the second half of that. Versus if we put out an RFP right now where we say, okay, we're going to do one A and then one B, but we've already kind of decided what one B includes. Has somewhat precluded the whole point of conversations. If that makes sense?
Well, I, I think if we, if we do the conversation piece first, then we'll know what will go into the second part. I mean, the first part is to figure out what goes into the second part. But the logistics of figuring out a building, we just need to know what needs to go in there, how big it needs to be. We have some ideas, but I think we want to know who's going to work in there. Where maybe we want, maybe we want to go in the future. How many multipurpose rooms do we need? You know, do we need seven? Do we need ten? I, I don't know. I mean, I think those are the kind of questions, what other kind of service groups might want to go in with us that we haven't even asked? You know, so, so. And I think we might get a lot more buy-in by the community if we have these conversations. And the community knows, well, we've, we have asked that group and they're like, no, we're not interested right now. We've got our own thing going on. We don't have any money to spend on it. And that's great, but as long as the community knows that we have asked the question, then I think they'll be more supportive of a bond. If they know that we've tried to collaborate with as many possible entities as, as we can. Gladys, did you have something else?
Yeah, I was actually just going to mention that if, if we're going to sell the idea of a bond, all of this has to happen ahead of time. I mean, how, how much time and energy is each counselor willing to put on selling a bond right now when we already have what the building's going to look like and who it's going to house even ahead of time? Before talking about those who are policed by, or the, that are marginalized and that are policed by, you know, our police department. We need to be bringing all those conversations in ahead of time to be able to sell a bond to our community, to our constituents, which if we did that right now, I know I, I, yeah, would be challenging.
Megan?
I guess this is totally getting into semantics, but you know, to what you're saying of like, okay, we want to show that we, we've asked the question and they can either say, hey, we're totally on board or we're like, we're doing our own thing and we don't have the money. Like I, I guess I want to build this first bit into not just like, we, we're doing this, here's the question, you know, maybe we give you six months to figure it out, but that we genuinely build a full community conversation. To say like, what can we do? What do we want to do? What makes sense? Which is where I think it's a pretty major thing to do this first bit. And our county needs to say yes to it.
Okay. Did you have something, Mark?
The two things, one, I, I think that we're all hitting on the same thing as, you know, some discussion before we can do this base needs part for, for the joint building. And I think that that's smart. And the discussion includes not just us, not just the county, but certainly those, as well as our partners and, and, and other things. And then two, I want to, I, I think that there is a chance that we could meet fall of twenty-two scheduled for this, if, you know, for the, you know, that gives, we have fifteen months to, before we have to be ready to go to a ballot. And that's tight, but it's not impossible. So I wouldn't give up on that. And then three, no matter what, you know, it's going to be twenty-four before we were moving to a building at the very, very best case. So, so I'm highly supportive of finding solutions to some of the things that the police department's been dealing with for too long. If it's renting, you know, a building for the, for the secure storage of stuff that shouldn't be downstairs, that's good. If it's, if it's moving on a whole cloth, that's, you know, I, I don't have any solutions, but I think that we, this is not counsel asking the police department to put up with what you have for another five years. So, so finding solutions around that, I think is important as, you know, Jessica brought it up first and I, and I completely agree. So, so basically that was a long time, a long way to say, yeah, I think you got it about right, Kate.
Okay, all right. Um, I'm, I'm, you know, I've been summarizing what everyone is saying here or the, you know, what I think is the general consensus of, of most of us. And I I agree. The atmosphere right now to get a bond through without doing some more work ahead of time, I think would be foolhardy. But adding the county and the city together, and I'd rather do city and county together, don't get me wrong. I absolutely think it's, would be better. But I think that the ask that would have to be made in this atmosphere would not pass right now. Now, if we do the work, it's possible that it will pass in a couple of years. So that, that's, you know, my caveat. If you look at the demographics of the votes for the county vote that happened, the city passed it. The city was the bulk of the votes. And you need the county too, but you know, if we're going to go full county, it's, it's going to be a, there's going to be a big push to be able to get this whole thing done county-wise. So just, you know, all those things would have to be looked at in more depth. And whether we could get a, a bond passed. But I think doing the work ahead of time will be helpful. We'll have more people on our side to help us get the, get it passed if we do the work correctly from the beginning. And it's going to take more work and it's going to take more meetings. And we are all of us on this Zoom meeting going to have to be more involved, talk to more people, talk to more, you know, county commissioners, have more meetings with them. So just, we are dedicating ourselves to more work to do this. I think it's worth it, but just know that's what, what we'll be asking ourselves to do with this, with going this direction. So I think you guys have a, do you have enough from us, Will and Rachel, on where everybody is?
It, it sounds like the work is at the elected level for the next several steps. And so we will hold tight, be ready to work in your direction and and support you when you've had the conversations you need to have. And I want to point out, next steps will be there to support you.
Okay. And what I'm, what I am going to suggest, and I'm going to call Mike Oates. And I'll talk to Rachel about this too, is potentially needing to have some facilitated meetings with the county commission. So we may need to, still need a contract to, to put that together. RFP or, you know, have, have someone that we've used before to do that. But I'll, I'll talk to Mike a little bit about it. Rachel and Jeff can talk and we'll figure that out.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. That's in line with what I was thinking. I'd be happy, happy to talk to the county manager that we're really talking about strategic facility planning with the county and that, that would be the ask. Along with, you know, potential community partners and social services already housed in the county.
Right, exactly. Okay, fantastic. That's where we are. All right. Thank you, Will. Appreciate it. Second quarter supplemental budget, beginning balance review.
Thank you, Mayor. This is an annual action that we go through consistent with our financial policies, is review actual beginning fund balances to what we had budgeted for. And to talk through kind of the, the mechanics of why this, why this happens is, you know, think of, thinking forward, we're about to build the budget for twenty-one, twenty-two. And we're going to have to make assumptions about what beginning fund balance is going to be on July first. And we're going to have to estimate that in about three months. And then it'll go through and get voted on. And then we still will have three months left for things to happen, for revenues to come in and for expenses to be paid. And so that means that actual amounts on July first will absolutely be different than what we calculate that they'll maybe, you know, in March. And then all the more, you know, invoices need to be processed. Books need to close and we need to go through an external audit. And so next year, this time, we'll have the same meeting saying what actual beginning fund balances really were on July first. But truing up, I think is a great financial practice to look at. Was there extra? Did things go as we planned? And do we need to make any mid-year sort of course corrections or readjust appropriations? In this resolution, we, basically everything came in right as expected. You know, you can never get to the dollar, but on a percentage basis, this is all very close. And so we're not, the resolution basically allows everything just to carry forward. And doesn't make any, doesn't make any allocation of the, of the additional money if funds came in higher than expected. And there's sufficient contingency to cover anywhere where it came in under. And, you know, if we're doing our job right, fifty percent of the time we're over, fifty percent of the time we're under. And we try to get that delta as small as possible. So pretty small action here, but I think a good one and a good practice to stay in every year. And, and that's a resolution in a nutshell.
Okay. Counselors, any questions? Mark?
I just want to say, Will, that looking at this chart, it's just like, your crystal ball is working really well. And I hope that we can keep, keep, keep rolling with that. So, so good job.
Thanks.
I just have one question, Will. On, under reserve funds, under special payments, page one hundred and twelve. Are those a group of a bunch of different things under that thing that says special payments, half a million?
Yeah, that is, one hundred and twelve, so the, not the appropriations that are changing, but the appropriations that exist.
Yeah.
That's our, that's mostly our, yes, that per site account that we created. So we charge
Oh, okay. All right.
All the departments proportionally based on their size of the purse, pie.
Okay, it's a purse thing. Okay. I thought maybe it was a group of a bunch of different things or something, but it's the purse. Okay, great, thanks. Other questions? All right, we have a motion on page one hundred and eight.
Yeah, thank you, Will. I felt like this was very straightforward. I move that city council approve resolution twenty twenty-one dash oh one to make appropriations and adjust the adopted budget for fiscal year twenty twenty dash twenty-one.
I'll second. Jessica's made a motion and Megan has seconded the motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-one dash oh one to make appropriations and adjust the adopted budget for fiscal year twenty twenty dash twenty-one. Additional discussion? All those in favor? Jessica?
I.
Tim? Gladys?
I.
Megan?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Chair votes aye. All right.
And Mayor, this is Eric Hany. I, I finally got my thing to work, so I apologize, but here I am. I actually heard most of the meeting, I heard most of the meeting, but I couldn't I actually heard most of the meeting, I heard most of the meeting, but I couldn't get my microphone to work, but I, um, I vote aye.
Oh, great, okay. Noted. Eric Haney has voted aye. Good to hear from you.
Thank you.
Oh, gosh. I'm glad you could hear the meeting, even if you couldn't talk to us. Good. We had a lot of good things that we were talking about. All right, um, regular business items are done, organizational updates. So, um, Rachel?
Sure. Well, the mayor already mentioned this, but, um, council several, several times has, has expressed interest in hearing more about social services, um, i- in the community. So, over the next several months, we'll have several people coming to talk with City Council. Um, thanks to the police chief for setting up Mid-Columbia Center for Living and the Mobile Crisis, um, response. Uh, coming next time, we'll have Pacific Source talking about the Community Health Needs Assessment. Later on, uh, in a couple of months, we'll be talking about the Behavioral Health Assessment that the city is engaged in, uh, a- also with Pacific Source, um, Mid-Columbia, um, Community Action Council. They have a new director will be coming, uh, to present to the City Council along with, uh, our homeless services, our outreach, uh, social worker that the city recently contracted with. She'll come and, and give a presentation about, uh, all these folks will be talking about who they serve and, and what the needs are that they see in the community. Also, we're gonna have a series of presentations on housing, really focused on that eighty, eighty percent and below and what the policy levers are that the City Council may have some control over, um, targeting that group. So that will start with, um, Eco Northwest, uh, coming back for a special presentation on that subject specifically. And then we'll hear from Mid-Columbia Housing, uh, Mid-Columbia Housing Authority and the Big River Land Trust. So, um, you'll see those on your agenda over the next several months. That's it for me.
Great, thank you so much. Um, and then I'm, uh, Rachel's been attending, and I believe, um, Gladys has attended to, to some of these meetings, Columbia Gorge Health Equity Council, I think it's Council. Um, and they're having another meeting later this month. I'm gonna attend that meeting. Um, and we're gonna try and talk about additional collaboration with them. So they'll just, some more discussion to be had, um, around that. So that'll be good. Let's see. So we have, uh, City Recorder reading Ordinance twenty-five-nine and twenty-sixty. Now, I have a question, since Eric is here and he actually can vote, and we have a full council, can we do first and second reading or not?
Yes, I will, I see the city attorney is gonna jump in here as well. Go ahead, Dan.
Let me check the charter, cuz it's kinda confusing for second and first reading, uh, versus emergency clause. So just stand by for a second, please.
While he's doing that, this is Eric speaking. I, I was trying to chime in and you were asking questions. Did I read, get any letters from anybody about this or that? Uh, I was supportive of both of those and I, I would have not had any kind of conflict issue or problem with respect to either. I was trying to chime in during the meeting, but my mic didn't work.
Thank you for your input, Eric.
Is there benefit to city staff if we do it now versus is it the end of the month?
Um, w- we can, we can go either way. Yeah, it is not, it's not critical.
I just thought it might make it easier if we could, you know, have it done and then you just move forward.
You can take it off the agenda.
Take it off the agenda for next time, yeah, yeah.
Mayor, uh, unanimous vote of the council gets it read, uh, both times in the same meeting. That's all it takes, unanimous.
Okay. All right. So Eric has said that he would vote for both of those. I mean, he did vote. He couldn't, we couldn't hear him the first time around. But he has said that he voted for, would vote for both of those. So I think we have unanimous. And everyone's here, so I think it'd just be easier. We can take it off the agenda. We, our agendas are so full, I'd just rather try and do first and second reading both if we can.
Okay, take a, a motion for one at a time then.
Okay.
Oh, whoops. Go ahead, sorry.
Can I just make the motion?
Sure.
Okay. Um, I move we, uh, do the reading of Ordinance twenty-five-nine, Street Frontage Improvements for the first and second time by title only.
We have a motion, we have a motion by Megan and a second by Jessica to, uh, read Ordinance twenty-five-nine, uh, Street Frontage Improvements for the first time by title only.
Counselor Metta?
Aye.
Counselor Rivera?
Aye.
Counselor Haney?
Aye.
Counselor Saunders?
Yes.
Counselor Cunahan?
Aye.
Counselors Ann Miller?
Yes.
Your Honor?
Yes.
Ordinance twenty-five-nine and ordinance amending Title fifteen, Buildings and Construction, Chapter fifteen, sixteen, Building Permits of the Hood River Municipal Code to bring the city's authority to exact street frontage improvements as a condition of building permit issuance into compliance with current state law.
Great. Um, the reading of Ordinance twenty-sixty, do I have a motion?
I will move we read Ordinance twenty-sixty, Professional Service Contracts for the first and second time by title only.
I'll second. I have a motion by Megan and a second by Gladys to read Ordinance twenty-sixty, Professional Services Contract for the first and second time by title only.
Counselor Metta?
Aye.
Counselor Saunders?
Yes.
Counselor Cunahan?
Aye.
Counselor Rivera?
Aye.
Counselors Ann Miller?
Yes.
Counselor Haney?
Aye.
Your Honor?
Yes.
Twenty-sixty and ordinance amending Title two Administrative, Administration and Personnel, Chapter two-point-zero-two, Public Contracting, Section two-point-three-two, point-zero-six-zero, Personal Service Contract of the Hood River Municipal Code to make the city's procurement procedure for personal services contract consistent with current state law.
Thank you, uh, Jen. Appreciate it. Um, Council President appointment. Mark San Miller. Mark has been our council president, um, for the last few years and has done a great job. And, um, I did ask him if he would consider, uh, being president again and if he would be here for most of the meetings, and he said he would. He might be, miss a meeting or so during this next year anyway. But he did say he would, uh, he would do that again. So I guess with the blessing of the rest of the council, I'd like to appoint Mark as our council president.
Here, here.
All right, I've got, uh, thumbs up, uh, by everyone that I can see. Um, and Eric, how do you feel about that?
You know, I think, uh, there's a number of us that could do a great job, and I think Mark is first among them. I think Mark is calm, cool, collected, well-spoken. Uh, I just, I appreciate his demeanor and I think he'd make an excellent, uh, council president.
Great, thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you, everybody. That's nice.
All right, um, council call. Um, just, I, I just have one thing. I have a million things going through my head right now with everything we're doing. Um, I, I wanna mention just a couple things. First of all, I, y- you guys were so focused tonight. Um, you were right on the ball. You had read your packet so well and asked questions ahead of time, had your questions formed, um, and were very articulate, and we were able to get through a huge amount of things tonight because of that. So I just, thank you so much. We've got so much to get done this year. And I, I really appreciate you being so on the ball tonight and, um, because we have so much we need to get done and, that was really great. That, that, it just felt like everything went so smooth, even though we had a long, hard meeting. We had our thoughts all, you know, figured out ahead of time. So thank you, I really, really, really appreciate it. You've spent extra time thinking about these things, it seems like, and I, and I so much, um, am so happy about it. The other thing is, you know, we had this gas outage, uh, during Christmas. We've had COVID, we've had, and I know people were upset about the gas outage. It was not a city service, it was not the sewer, it was not the water. Our Public Works Department, um, couldn't do anything about it. And, uh, you know, people were kind of upset with the city. We didn't have the information, I'm just saying this so for the public knows. We didn't have the information as much as Northwest Natural Gas had that information about up-to-date what was happening. Um, and it was a horrible situation for them, you know, one of the worst they've seen in the Pacific Northwest in a long, long, long time. And they did the best they could do and, um, you know, the city was kind of, our hands were tied. We, there wasn't something we could do. And we tried to direct people from our website to their website because they were putting up-to-date information on their website. So I just wanted to kinda let people know that's the city's involvement. It wasn't, we didn't really have any involvement. And we couldn't do anything more than we did about it. So, um, that's it for, for my council call. Um, other people, Jessica?
I actually do not have anything tonight, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay, Tim?
No, nothing here.
Gladys?
Yeah, I just wanna remind folks that COVID is still alive and kicking and that we all need to continue to practice washing our hands, wearing our masks and all that good stuff. And I also just wanted to remind folks and really encourage individuals to reach out to their primary care doctors and talk to your physicians about, uh, the COVID vaccine. Is that something that you are interested in doing? What are your questions that you reach out to your primary care physician and that you get those answers? And I just wanted to, you know, kind of, this last year was my first year on council. Um, I think I did pretty well, uh, lots of learning. And I just wanted to, you know, thank all of you for helping me. I know that, um, I call you guys a lot and, um, I'm so glad for our very long conversations and I'm just thankful as well for just city staff. You guys have been great with me. Um, our constituents have been amazing. And I just wanted to thank all of you, um, for my time and I, uh, am excited to continue to collaborate with you all and do some really awesome stuff for our community, for the time being and for the, you know, next four years.
Thank you. Uh, Mark?
Uh, not much. I just wanna wish all of you a happy new year and, and, uh, hearty hopes that twenty-one is much, much different than twenty. Um, so, it'll be fun. Nice working with everyone.
Megan?
Uh, I'll, I'll certainly second the happy twenty-one. I, I, God, I hope it's a better year, um, than the last one. One quick thing, I think Rachel had sent this out, but Visit Hood River is, um, looking for a, a new director. So definitely, if you know anyone who would be interested in that position, we, reach out to them. Um, and then I, I feel like I'm just gonna say something, but, you know, last week, last Wednesday, I imagine just, just really highlights the, the dangers of, of lies and disinformation and conspiracy theories. And I just wanna say, both as individuals and as a community, we, we need to be vigilant at, at, you know, knowing what you're researching and finding, knowing what you're sharing, um, calling out other folks in the community if you need to, that, we have a lot of issues as a community to work through and we need to have a, a, an equal base of facts that we're all working from, uh, I think to actually accomplish our goals. So I just hope we can do that.
Okay, um, so we have an executive session. So we, we will be going out of Zoom. I need to read this first, though.
Mayor, did you, did you call on Counselor Haney?
Oh, gosh, no, I didn't. No, I didn't. Sorry about that. Eric, go ahead.
Well, that's okay. I think I'm just numbers at the bottom of the screen, but first of all, I do apologize. I apologize to the mayor, to staff, and then each of my colleagues about being, I was out of range. I was out, out of range until just very recently. So here I am. Um, I echo the sentiments of all relative to the new year. Hopefully we can, we can turn a new page. One bit of business, uh, and I actually had a meeting with the, the, the Hood River County sort of group of folks on that ODOT ACT Committee just before this council meeting started. And ironically, everything worked fine with that meeting for some reason, but, um, there's apparently some funding, as part, one of these new, one of the recent, uh, federal COVID legislations that was just passed at the federal level, that earmarked some funds specifically for ODOT, uh, and the two ports, Port of Cascade Locks and Port of Hood River, to provide some COVID relief. And I don't know anything about this language yet. Apparently it even surprised, it surprised both of the ports. But it must be a gift from Greg Walden, maybe a parting gift. I, I don't know that for a fact. To Megan's point, I should be careful what I say because I, I don't actually know. But I, I do have reason to believe that there's gonna be some cash, federal cash to support ODOT generally and these two interstate bridges. And, um, we're trying to form a kind of just a working group to get that off the ground. I suspect that I will play a small role because I'm not really connected with the port. But I just mentioned that cuz it's good for the community if we can have some federal dollars coming our way there. But, uh, this is just kind of new information and I hope to have more information about it soon.
Great, thank you, Eric. All right, so, um, just logistically how this is gonna work, so that people on, that are listening to the call will know. We are on a Zoom call now. We will go off of this Zoom call after I read the script and we will log back in, in a separate, thing that you have been sent, um, to separate Zoom that is not public because this will be an executive session. This is our first executive session since we've been doing this through Zoom. Um, and then, I'm trying to figure out how we're gonna do this. I guess what would then we would have to do is go back into regular sessions. So Jonathan, can we come back into this number again after our executive session?
Mayor, Mayor, an alternative is just simply to adjourn the meeting now as we would not be coming back.
Okay. All right, well, we can do that then. We, then we'll just, uh, because it's just six of it, then just re- readjourning later. All right, we will go ahead. I'll read this script and then we will adjourn the regular meeting. City Council will now meet an executive session to pursue it to ORS one-nine-two-point-six-six-oh-one-H to consult with council concerning the legal rights and duties of a public body with regard to current litigation or litigation likely to be filed and Oregon Revised Statute one-nine-two-point-six-six-oh-one-E to conduct deliberation with persons designated by the governing body to negotiate real property transactions. Representatives of the news media and designated staff are allowed to attend the executive session. All other members of the audience are asked to leave the room. Representatives of the news media are specifically directed not to report on any of the deliberations during the executive session except to state the general subject of the session as previously announced. No decision may be made nor final action taken in executive session. The executive session is expected to last twenty-
Twenty-five minutes.
Oh, twenty-five minutes, okay, twenty to twenty-five minutes. Um, but may be extended by general announcement to the public outside of the council chambers. At the end of the executive session, we will welcome the, well, we, we don't have a room. We are not gonna welcome back into the room because we are not gonna go into another Zoom call. We will not refer, return to open session, um, and we will not take action. Is that correct? That I should be saying that we will not take, being taking action?
Correct.
Okay, all right. And that's, you know, what we're gonna do because we're gonna adjourn our meeting now. We may choose to allow other specified persons to attend. We, we don't have any other specified persons to attend, only the news media. So we will go ahead and adjourn our regular meeting and everyone needs to get out of this meeting and find numbers. Yeah, go ahead, Rachel.
Mayor, I just, um, Jonathan, could you resend the link to- Mayor, I just, Jonathan, could you resend the link to everybody? I've heard from a couple of councillors that they need the link again, just make sure everybody has it, Jonathan, are you?
Yep, absolutely, it's been about six hours into a sentence, we'll get into it now.
Thank you so much.
Okay, thanks, guys, we'll see you in a second on the other one.